That's right. Oh, I hopefully have everything up.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I think we have a good to go from WinCam. So, good morning, everybody. It is 9:30 a.m. on July 13th, 2021. So I will call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of school committee. And just for clarification, if you are watching on our live stream, and if you are, then you've already gotten there, but we are wincam.org/watch/education. I think in our agenda listing, it said something different, so just for clarification. And you can also watch from Comcast Channel 22 or from Verizon Channel 38. And, let's see, I will just read off our agenda. So we have public comment, and then we have reports and discussion items, including building and facility update, a curriculum subcommittee update, the summer professional development PD update, the American Rescue Plan Act inquiry from Senator Lewis. And then for action items, we have a vote to approve the Wilder School, and a vote to approve the 2021-22 school committee meetings calendar, a vote to approve job descriptions, a vote to approve the superintendent recommendation on Director of Finance and Operations, and also to nominate members for the Hiring Committee for the Director of Finance and Operations, an acceptance of a gift from the McCall Parents Association's outside seating and bike rack, and approval of surplus AEDs to town departments, and approval of minutes for June 1st. And then a chair report, superintendent report, and future agenda items, next meeting dates, and adjournment. And then just before we begin, in case you weren't able to make it to last night's, well, all of us were. But in case anybody in our audience publicly couldn't make it, we would just like to welcome our interim superintendent, Dr. Frank Hackett, who officially began July 1st. Dr. Hackett brings many years of experience as a superintendent in Braintree and Pembroke, and also as an assistant superintendent superintendent in Maine. So we're really happy to have your leadership and your steady guidance as we look forward to a very fruitful partnership.
Thank you very much. It's good to be here. As we met last night, it felt like we never really left the room until this morning. We're back again. But I appreciate the warm welcome, and I am very pleased to be here.
Thank you. So, and then we will now move into public comment. I'll just read this portion off. Public comment shall be for a period of 20 minutes and is not a discussion, a debate, or a dialogue between individuals and the committee. It's a citizen's opportunity to express their opinion on issues on the agenda or of school committee business. And any individual wishing to speak before the committee shall identify themselves by name and address, and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. And all individuals shall speak to the full committee through the chair and shall not address individual members or administrators. And I will just comment. This is only the second time that we have been in person since March of 2020, and we will be prioritizing in-person public comment, and then we will give the remaining time to remote public comment. And I would just ask you for your patience, as this is the first time we are running public comment in person and remotely on Zoom. It's a work in progress. So I will now just disappear from here and pop up on Zoom. Oh, yes, that's right. And do we have anybody in person for public comment? Please feel free to come to the table.
Thank you. This is my first time being at an in-person school meeting in years. An over a year. I want to, even though I know the new members, I want to welcome them to the committee. I'm really grateful that we have good people serving. And welcome to our new superintendent. I know that you guys...
Could I just ask you to please give your name and address?
Oh, sorry. Pamela Court, Arlington Street, Precinct 5. My two kids are in high school. Last year was an incredibly difficult year for everybody. Last year was particularly hard, I think, on administrators, the school committee, and our teachers. I hope moving forward that our community is kinder about things. It was really rough. I'm grateful for all of the services that my kids received. They were both fully remote in high school. And I personally was impressed with the level of instruction that they got and the responsiveness of people when I contacted them. So I just want to say that publicly, because I know you guys have gotten a lot of flack. I do want to urge, when you're considering policies moving into the new year and kids being back fully, that while Massachusetts may not have a formal policy for masking indoors at school, and we even received an email from one of the administrators basically saying that, that school will be in session, but masks will not be a requirement, although it wasn't clear whether that was for just that school or for Winchester in general. It was part of a different email. Chrissy, you look confused, but I can forward that to you if you like. But I'd like to urge you to consider that there have been seven cases, this is at the BOH last night, seven cases in Winchester over the last two weeks. That's the equivalent of about 2.2 cases, average daily cases, per 100,000 population. So we are double what the Massachusetts state average is in Winchester. All seven cases were among unvaccinated people, whether that was by choice or, in some cases, people who were too young to get the vaccine. And we will have unvaccinated students in school next year and students of that age who have families with immunocompromised people. And I would like to encourage you to consider policies in this district that protect the entire community. And I know that it's a difficult decision, and I know that there's a lot of parental pressure on this, but I'd like to point that out. I also just read a story today about seven cases, or not seven cases, rather, actually it was, it was seven cases at a wedding in Texas that was outdoors among fully vaccinated people, where seven people caught the Delta variant after they had been fully vaccinated, one of whom passed away. So being outdoors, being vaccinated, these are not guarantees. And so I just want you to all consider that. And again, thank you all for what was a very difficult year and what is hopefully a much better year moving forward.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Pam. Good to see you too.
Do we have anyone else here for public comment in person? I will just say that I had received a letter from Isabella Boyd, who is, I believe, she is a second grader in town. And she... And she wrote a very nice handwritten letter to us, which I wish I had brought it with me, but I will just summarize. She wanted to thank everybody and then also to thank, in particular, the crossing guards in town. She was very grateful to them for their enthusiasm and for their help every single day on the job. And she requested that we set up a tip jar as a measure of gratitude for our crossing guards. So I just wanted to acknowledge her very kind note. It was very carefully and neatly penned. Thank you very much, Isabella. And now I'm just going to disappear and pop up on Zoom, and we will open up the remote portion of the meeting for public comment. Just one second. It's very large.
Jen, did you start this already?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
And...
Are you producing?
To be able to see the...
Oh, I'm sorry. You have to click Start the Webinar. He's...
Start the webinar, okay, yes. All right. I think it's been a little while. All right. Let's get this started.
They're trying to add some enthusiasm.
They are, aren't they?
Yeah.
They know we're sick of it.
Mix it up to keep us on the toes.
Yeah, kind of friendly.
Have a little music in the background.
All righty. Okay. Um, yeah, I'm gonna power. All right. So this is the remote portion of our public comment. And if any of our participants who are attending via Zoom right now are here to make a public comment, could you please raise your remote hand? Okay. And then as part of the remote public comment, I'm going to ask you to please turn on your cameras so that we can keep this on par with our in-person public comment. Thank you very much. And I will now elevate Mr. Chris Kerhiats. If I can find my cursor. And if it will promote.
I think it's a left click on that.
Uh, promoted, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
I want to let him know he's up.
Mr. Kerhiats, you are all, okay, you are here. Woo-hoo. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Chris Kerhiats. I live at 125 Stafford Road in Lowell, and I am also the Director of the Social Studies Department for Grade 6 through 12 here in Winchester. Last month, Dr. Evans shared a list of distinguished retirees from this past school year with the school community. Each of them was duly recognized for their commitment to the students of Winchester. However, one teacher, due to the timing of their retirement, was not included on the list. Kenny Tully retired a few weeks before the start of this past school year due to health concerns related to the pandemic. This decision put him on a list of retirees for the 2019-2020 school year after retirees from that school year had already been recognized for their service. I'd like to take a minute to recognize Kenny Tully's 40-plus years of service to the district by reading the dedication to Mr. Tully from this year's McCall Yearbook into the public record. Of all of the new and strange developments of the 2020-21 school year, there may have been none stranger than a school year at McCall starting without Mr. Kenny Tully in front of his eighth-grade U.S. History 1 classroom. For over four decades, Mr. Tully imparted his knowledge of local, state, and national history to his students, regaling them with stories of the country's founding and growth while instilling in them the lessons and values of civic duty and pride as he taught civics and United States history to generations of Winchester's children. Outside of the classroom, Mr. Tully was a fixture in the town's track community, serving as an official, coach, and mentor to track athletes from all of Winchester schools. The fact that Mr. Tully started teaching in Winchester in 1976 as the country was celebrating its bicentennial would be seen as no coincidence to those who were able to take part in the annual eighth-grade trip to Washington, D.C. under his enthusiastic guidance. From a seemingly bottomless well of knowledge to his kind and jovial nature, Mr. Tully made an impression on all those he came in contact with. Scores of Winchester residents, past and present, were shaped by Mr. Tully's influence, and the town is the better for it. Thank you, Mr. Tully, for your years of dedication and service to McCall and to the community at large. Kenny Tully was an enthusiastic and gregarious eighth-grade social studies teacher at McCall Middle School for over 40 years. His presence in the district is sorely missed, but his influence is and will continue to be widely felt. This was a trying year for many of Winchester's educators, but we all can take inspiration from a man who saw teaching as a lifelong calling. As he started his work in Winchester, long before most of the teachers in the district, who were his colleagues until last year, even started their own school careers in kindergarten. Thank you for allowing me this time to publicly recognize Kenny's commitment to Winchester, and I'd be happy to provide a written copy of these remarks for the meeting's minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kerhiats. I am now going to return you to the attendees.
Okay.
Somehow. The options are odd. Remove, remove?
Remove.
Okay, I'm removing you. I'm sorry.
All right. Thanks.
It shouldn't hurt.
Oh, no. Let's see.
Click on panelist.
Click on panelist. Oh, wait, okay. Yes, there he is. Okay, now I am changing you back to an attendee. Okay, that sounds much better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Please go.
Yeah, let's just take a second probably before we...
Oh, wait, I see. There's a little X there. Okay. All right, next. Okay, this is Jennifer Zhang. I am promoting you to panelist.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi.
Yes, thank you.
You can see me. Okay, hi. This is Jennifer Zhang. I am the principal and outreach director for the Winchester School of Chinese Culture. We have been around in town for 17 years. So recently, we decided, or you know, just wanted to move forward to open a Chinese immersion day school. And I called the, I called the chairman. Yes. Can you hear me talking? I said a few things already.
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay. So before this meeting last week, I called Karen, the Chair of the School Committee. And hi, and she said that hopefully, you know...
We can still...
We can hear you.
Oh, okay. So I think I'm going to interfere with the live streaming. I think I'm hearing myself, so I turned off the live streaming.
That might be good.
Right. So I was wondering, you know, what is, just asking question here. What is the step of getting approved? You know, we are eager to open up a Chinese immersion day school in town, since we've got quite a few inquiries for the past few years. But finally, you know, maybe after the pandemic, we, you know, and then this is, school's finally open, we decide that, you know, let's go move on. Let's really put our hands into this adventure, you know, this new work. So I wanted to ask the School Committee and Superintendent, our new Superintendent, what is the first step and how we're gonna, how we can do to get the school established, get approved, and who should we contact during the time of the process? So yeah, that's my comment. I'm looking forward for help from you guys.
So thank you very much, Ms. Zhang. And I'll just comment that public comment, we don't generally interact and/or answer questions. So I would just recommend reaching out to Dr. Hackett via email and...
I'll get in touch with you.
And...
Okay.
Okay.
Can I ask a clarifying question, and without getting into the Q and A? Is the... Ms. Zhang, are you looking for the district to develop a Chinese immersion program? Or are you looking to develop one sort of privately, and you're looking for some sort of support from the district? It would just help me to understand what it is you are looking for.
Okay, so we are looking forward to open a Chinese immersion school by ourselves. When I look up the state regulatory, and it says that it's up to the local education department, School Committee, to approve it. So that's why I'm reaching out to you as my first step. I see that there is agenda today to approve the Wilder School. I think it's gonna be a new, sort of a new style Montessori school that's gonna be opening in Winchester soon. They're renting St. Mary's Classroom. So I thought that maybe our question kind of just aligned with, since Wilder School can get to the state of putting on the table to get approved. Hopefully, one day, we will be up to that state too, you know, getting approval. But I know that there's a lot of work to do to move to that point.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to now move you back to an attendee, and we will move on to any further public comment. Thank you so much, Ms. Zhang.
Thank you.
Karen, you can't see, but that's 20 minutes also.
Okay. We have now reached the 20-minute mark for public comment. So I will just ask if there is any further public comment. Otherwise, we will close down the remote portion of our meeting and return to just our in-person meeting and the live stream via WinCam. Thank you very much, and we will close this portion of the public comment. Thank you for your participation. Okay. All right, so it is now 9:57, and we will now move into the reports and discussion items, beginning with a building and facility update. So Dr. Hackett will be providing an overview, and Mr. Nixon will be providing an update on space programming at the Carriage House.
So to manage your expectations, I'll be providing an overview that was provided by Dr. Evans or would have been provided by Dr. Evans and Ellen Woodmore at your June 15th meeting. I have put it in the packet which was previously distributed. I'm just gonna give a quick update on, really, on Parkers more than anything else as we look to transition four preschool sections to this building. There's been a lot of work done. If you haven't had a chance to see it, I would invite you after meeting, if you have time, to just kind of make your way downstairs to see the classrooms and what they look like. The elevator is still in progress, but my understanding is it will be completed by July 31st. And all other work excluding the elevator, we do have a certificate of occupancy. So we are good to go as soon as the elevator is done. So you know better than I do, probably the work that's been done to this building, even if you look at the outside, there's, the DPW has done a ton of work with the cleanup on, and I'm trying to orient myself, but on the hill that's on the roadside, they hydroseed, had the, that side hill was hydroseeded, the grass is actually coming in. We had a lot of rains. That's been a good thing. But there's some other detailed information within the memo that was sent to you or was part of your packet under Dr. Evans's letterhead. So if you have any questions, I may or may not be able to answer them, but I certainly can get you information if you have some detailed questions that you would like to get to me. And other than that, I would just, I would go back, turn it back to the chair. Just I know there's a little bit of a discussion around the Carriage House.
One question, is Meg, who's our kind of point of contact with Flansburgh right now, given we have had some departures? Is Meg White helping us out at all from engineering and planning on this?
My understanding is Meg has been helping us out, and then, but I can find out for sure.
She is just an incredible multitasker. I cannot, I cannot praise her enough. She has so much going on, just on the town side, and she's helping us out a lot on the school. So we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Any further questions on this part? Okay. Then we will move on to Mr. Nixon, who will be introducing a little bit about the Carriage House and its space program.
Well, I'm gonna tease for a little bit, because before I talk about the Carriage House, I want to give you an update on a few other things. You know, we talked, what, six weeks or so ago, and just to give you guys a general overview of all the many kind of design and conceptual projects we have going on in the district. So we do have a revised scheme that came in for the Lincoln School for our site work and flat work. So Gale Engineering is working to tweak that and come up with a cost estimate. The ball's in their court, but we expect to see something in the next couple of weeks. We also got a preliminary report on the facade restoration at the McCall Middle School. That actually came in like four days ago. So Meg and I are in the process of reviewing that. I don't think there are any open questions for us. There's a cost estimate that's coming in with that soon as well. Both of these projects and the timeliness of getting some input are gonna be important, because I think in our next school committee meeting, we will be talking about our capital project cycle. So the Capital Planning Committee kicks off our cycle actually tomorrow night. We start hearing from town departments, fire, DPW, police, and so forth. Typically, school department comes in last. We always have a good reason why. Sometimes it's a new superintendent. Sometimes it's late-breaking information on a building. You may remember, I think it was a year, year or two ago, Morocco, we had that capital report that came in in August. So it was very important for us to be sure we had the full picture. When we make decisions about what our priorities are, we will typically come up with a, we may have a list of 20 projects that are on our radar, but it's very important that we actually prioritize those, because in any given year, we'll be lucky if even three get funded by capital. We're in a little bit of a better spot, sorry for the long PSA here. We are in a little bit better spot in terms of capital funding thanks to the override that passed about two years ago, which did, which kind of more in a robust fashion permanently funded the capital and building stabilization funds. But the dearth of funding that we had for years not only impacted the schools, it impacted all the other departments in town. So really, so many departments are really in catch-up mode. The police need things, fire department needs things, West Side Fire Station's in a tough spot as well. So at any rate, I think in any given year, you know, we're doing really well if we get three projects funded. So I look forward to bringing that information to Karen and to the superintendent for, so we can maybe package that for the next meeting and start that conversation. And then I'm expecting maybe the meeting after, we would be voting. That's still gonna be pretty late in the process, but I think that'll work, and I'll discuss that with capital tonight, be sure that makes sense for everybody. We may have to have the prospect of a special one-off meeting if it needs to be just dedicated to capital conversations. It just depends upon how the information comes in and what everybody's availability is, especially with a couple of new members, because you guys may have some really good questions. I want to be sure we address all those.
Chris, can I interrupt for a minute?
Yeah.
Do you expect us to see rankings before that August meeting and come with those there? Or rank after, as we've done in the past?
So my, good question. I'll try to answer it. What I'm looking to do is just share information with you guys through the chair when it comes in. And we will go back and find like our last capital grid, our five-year plan that'll be familiar to many of you. And I know, you know, Seamus has been coming to meetings for a while. I think it'll be, I know it'll be familiar to Seamus, probably familiar to you, Tom. So I don't think it'll be a bunch of new information in terms of the what. What will be new is what does it cost? Because we will have, for instance, we know we need to do the restoration at the McCall facade. We didn't really have, other than just a very general number cranked out by our VFA database. Didn't really have an architectural or engineering analysis. This is especially true at... This is especially true at Lincoln, where we know we've been struggling with failing site work and flat work for years. What we said was is we're just throwing money away chasing these problems because so much of it was actually built on poor or in some cases, no foundation. So that just needs to be ripped out and rebuilt. So the what in that case is really important, right? So what is the new design solution and what is it gonna cost? And is that something we might do all at once? Or maybe, could there be some phases to that work? These are some of the things that we're trying to work out right now.
Okay.
So to answer your question, what I envision is just sort of sharing some information with the school committee. Perhaps we could just as a historical point, gather the last round, the five-year plan. We could share that just as an informational item. And then at our next meeting, we can actually have some discussion. I can share those updates with you, could see if Meg White's available to join us as well. And then we'll go through our usual kind of capital working group process, have some conversations with DPW. And I know as Pete is coming back, he's been out for a while. So we'll be in a position to make some recommendations to the school committee. But I don't think we're ranking anything for at least two meetings.
Okay.
Maybe three. I'm sorry, it took me forever to answer that question. So McCall, Lincoln, some good news on Morocco. So the, all the engineering has been done for the boiler replacement and the work is out to bid. Bids are actually due in two weeks, not on the design, but on the actual work itself. So our goal is to have those boilers replaced by the start of the heating season. So we're thinking, you know, sometime between mid-October, end of October. They will not be in by the start of school. It just doesn't happen that quickly. But we have a good team onboard doing the work. It's an engineering firm that's done a lot of work in Winchester in the past with our schools. So I'm excited that that is moving forward. One other thing, just general building projects update with respect to the Lynch School, and this is sort of a segue to, you know, the space program piece. We did submit our draft, RFS or RFP, depending upon what you wanna call it, for the architect and engineering team for the new Lynch Elementary School. That was submitted to MSBA the last business day before July 4th, whenever that was. We haven't heard anything back yet, but we do have some tentative schedule dates in terms of designer selection and when we think we'll have an architect onboard. Unfortunately, we did lose some time, given our kind of back and forth on design enrollment. Some of you may recall that, you know, we landed in a better spot, but that took some time. And with the MSBA, if you're having those conversations, you basically kind of step out of the line for a moment and when other districts are ready, they kind of get ahead of you and take your spot. They only take so many OPM panels at a time, so many designer selections at a time. So I'm not gonna share that schedule publicly yet because we're still waiting on the MSBA. If they get back and say, "Your RFP looks great, you're good to go," then we're gonna be more comfortable with dates. If there's a lot of questions and a lot of pushback, then it, we're just gonna have to keep working on it. There's a team of six to eight people over there who are, you know, just as engaged in this as the EFPBC is. So, but it's, we're moving forward, we're making progress, so we're happy about that. So then that's a segue to the Central Office relocation project and there was a program document in your packet. So just to remind everybody, that Central Office has called Parkhurst home since the fall of 2013, well, summer really, summer of 2013, concurrent with the Vincent Owen students moving out of this building and into the new VO school. VO students used this as swing space during the construction of that school. So prior to being located at Parkhurst, Central Office was at Lynch in space that had previously been instructional space, so classrooms that were carved up. And superintendent had half a classroom, Frida had half a classroom, we had a waiting room there. Finance director was in a quarter of a classroom. There was just continued pressure for instructional space at Lynch associated with the enrollment growth there at that building. So when VO opened, we did a redistricting in town that not only created a larger VO district so we could send more kids to VO, we actually were able to send more kids to Lynch because Central Office moved here. But when that happened, there was an understanding with leaders in town, including the finance committee, that this was really seen as a short to medium-term move. Because this is not the highest and best use of Parkhurst. And no offense to Dr. Hackett, but, you know, superintendent doesn't need a thousand square foot office.
Doesn't need it, but maybe he wants it.
Yeah. So, you know, this is a building much like the Mystic School. For, you know, anybody who, you know, watches on WinCam and is more familiar with Mystic than they are with Parkhurst, similar square footage. This building's a little newer, built in the 40s, but two stories, built into a hill, not a new building, dated systems. But we have classrooms that are quite large and it's not really designed for an office use. So anyway, the plan was that Central Office would be here for a period of time. It really needed a permanent location and our former chair liked to call it a forever home. I like, I like that expression. Because really, if you go back over time, Central Office has been kicked from one sort of place to another. Sort of kicking the can along the way, along the timeline. So when we completed our master plan, school facilities master plan in 2017, one of the things we also wanted to look at was where's the forever home for Central Office? There were sort of three things that we studied at that time. One was the Carriage House, which is a school committee property between the Sanborn House and Ambrose. That has been kicked around as an idea for several years. The other, of course, is we could be incorporating Central Office into the new build of either Morocco or Lynch, depending upon which would come first with the MSBA, and of course, we know it's Lynch. We also, though, looked very carefully at the prospect of renting space. That does come up from time to time. And when we modeled it over 20 years, we actually found it was equivalent in cost to the tune of maybe a couple of hundred thousand dollars. And that was assuming no fit-up costs for rental, assuming you'd get four lease renewals with no increase in the rent. So a lot of risk associated with that. And of course, at the end of 20 years, you're still paying rent as opposed to you've paid off a bond for some sort of project. So having gone through the evaluative process, the school committee back in 2017 felt that the preferred option would be the Carriage House, given there would be some risk in doing Morocco or Lynch, not knowing when that might even happen. Now that we actually are onboard with MSBA and we, we continue to get feedback from our OPM that fall '25 still should be doable, and by the way, this will be the first thing we talk to our prospective architects about for Lynch. What we needed to do was come up with a space program for Central Office. So if you, if one says design is problem-solving, programming is problem-seeking, right? So an architect can't really design something until they kind of have the menu of spaces. What do you need, how many do you need, how big and so forth? So that's what the program is. A programming process is gonna be necessary for Central Office, whether it should go to the Carriage House or to Lynch. And the MSBA does not pay for this because while they would allow Central Office, they, they might allow Central Office, I should say, to go to Lynch. It's not reimbursable. So it is permissible in some instances, not reimbursable. So we have to pay for this one way or the other. One other caveat I'll just mention, the MSBA has reminded us twice that they do not always approve administrative spaces going into new build projects. And I think this is in a prior memo I sent you guys. I think they told us they would not be in any position to approve a Lynch option until I believe it's September of '22, September or October of '22. It often is approved, but they wanted to be very clear that we should not move forward with the presumption that it will be. So there's another sort of element of risk there. So having said all that, our OPM knows that this is something that we're looking at and we wish to consider for Lynch, but we also wanted to understand if this was even doable at the Carriage House. So what you have in the packet is a space program that's been developed in three separate meetings with a working group. And I'd be happy to ask, especially Lori, because I think you were at all three, but if Lori or Jen or Frank care to say anything about sort of the process or the outcome, I think it's pretty straightforward. What you see here is a list of the spaces we need. NSF is net square footage, literally the space one gets from inside face of wall to inside face of wall. And then when you put all those pieces together, you have to account for things like circulation, stairs, elevators and so forth. And that's how you scale onto GSF, which is gross square footage. So the good news is that the Carriage House looks like it will work well for this program with a couple of caveats. One of the wings of the Carriage House has been substantially damaged due to some water infiltration over the years, but that happens to be the wing where in addition, back in like the 1970s with concrete block and is in really poor condition, not original at all to the building, really needs to come off from a historical preservation point of view. So our architect is looking at the prospect of taking that wing off, which is already in bad shape, and sort of rebuilding something in kind that would actually make the building completely accessible. So a new accessible stair and that would locate the elevator and accessible bathrooms. So, and that would leave the rest of the existing building to sort of accommodate the administration and staff and without having to cut it up too much for, you know, invasive things like stairs and elevators. So we have a detailed existing conditions report we'll be sharing with you guys probably by the next meeting. And the design work, as I said, is ongoing. We have a mechanical, electrical plumbing narrative we're reviewing right now with DPW as we try to understand what the costs are for this. And then my last comment will be to remind the committee, we've, the architect who's doing this is TAPE. They were the architects of VO, they were the architects of Ambrose. They've done some previous studies at the Carriage House. TAPE is actively working on MSBA projects with districts like ours. So we've charged TAPE not only to help us develop an option for the Carriage House, find out, does it work, number one? If it does, what does that look like, what does that cost? We've then asked TAPE to come in and make a presentation to the school committee that kind of compares and contrasts a Carriage House solution versus a Lynch solution. Lynch is a little difficult for us to imagine, right? Because we don't even have an architect onboard yet. But we do have a space program. The space program is portable, right? So the whole purpose of this exercise was to say, this is about how much space Dr. Hackett and the team need regardless of whether it's at one site or the other. And then that can drive some pretty good presumptions around cost, even at Lynch, where our team has a really good sense of, you know, where bids are coming in, what annual escalation looks like. So I'm hopeful that TAPE will be in a position to come talk to the school committee and we can talk through kind of, if you wanna say pros and cons, it's not quite as black and white as that, of course, but some, some factors to consider. You know, timeliness, you could have, we could theoretically be in the Carriage House by the summer or fall of '23. Lynch is gonna have to wait till the '25. And a part of that conversation is gonna be, think back to our previous school committee meeting and Mr. Zakelli and we learned about all the building projects we have in town. If we were to pursue a Lynch option, which could be a good solution, it means there, there is no obvious place to get more space for instruction in this district for four years because the space is here. So we just have to keep thinking about this, not so much as a Carriage House project, but a Central Office relocation and space recapture project. If we feel like there is urgency towards getting this space sooner rather than later and what our appetite for risk is, that may come into our calculus as well. So that's a, I think as good of an update as I can give you about where we're going. A lot of work has been done. Karen is part of the working group. I want to thank John Clemson, who's a member of the Winchester Historic Commission, who's participated as well. He's been incredibly insightful, very, very helpful. And of course, our, our team here, Ellen was with us when we kicked it off. Ms. Kirby, Dr. Ellen Emma and Dr. Hackett have also joined in. So if okay by you, I, I'm happy for any of you guys to weigh in at your thoughts on the process or where we are today.
If you have any questions, Mr. Hopcroft.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Nixon. That was, that was a very, very insightful presentation. I was curious, you talked about space risks and timing risks and cost risks. And I'm wondering if there are, you know, other, you know, safety or other considerations that come into, you know, co-locating with the student population versus being separately located?
That's, so that's a great question. So we are in a post-Newtown, post-Stonem Douglas world. And, you know, what goes on in, you know, a central office or administrative suite is a very different kind of function than what goes on in our schools. You know, stressful situations happen in our school buildings. Stressful situations happen at school administrative offices as well. As I think we all know, sort of going around the table. So our former superintendent, Dr. Evans, I think really articulated it well during the master plan process. She said, she felt strongly that while, you know, it would be nice if Central Office were located in a school building, what, what she really felt we needed to be, at least, was she wanted Central Office to be near a school building. That would be sort of just as effective, kind of mindful of the issues around sort of security and separation, right? And I don't wanna speak for the administrators around the table, but it seems to me if I were in your shoes, it would feel awkward to me if I was nowhere near a school building. So to your point, one of the appeals of the Carriage House option is that it is completely physically separate from Ambrose and yet that space is just across the parking lot. So when we think about things like any PD, grade level team meetings that usually would engage administration, we imagine that would actually happen at Ambrose. A question came up early, which is where would the school committee have its meetings? Well, we used to actually meet in the library at Lynch, back when Central Office was physically at Lynch. And so in that model, one can imagine we could meet in, at the Library Media Center at Ambrose, just like we did. Although they have some interesting like conference room options that are already being developed, you know, in the, in the Carriage House. To put a finer point on it, prior to being located at Parkhurst, when Central Office was at Lynch, if you had an appointment with the superintendent and you were buzzed into the building, you had free run of the building. You could go anywhere you wanted, if you wanted to. And so that's why this programming exercise was so important because none of this means Central Office cannot or should not be located at Lynch, but it needs to be physically and architecturally separate. And what that means is its own circulation, its own stair, its own elevator. Because what we don't wanna have happen is sort of doors that are propped open, right? So shared break room, shared toilets, that kind of thing. So that if someone gets into that space, then they have that access to the rest of the school building, just from a risk management point of view. So the goal would be, Mr. Hopcroft, just to keep it architecturally separate. And it's one of the reasons why I think the program document is so helpful and makes it really portable, if you will. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Mr. Nixon, while you're looking at the Carriage House and during the space program, while you're also looking at access to the site because currently the Ambrose, between Ambrose and the Sanborn House, there's no parking currently for staff and families at Ambrose many times. And also, street access. It's difficult, as it is now, for drop-off, pickup bus lanes at Ambrose. And with Carriage House, that would only be exacerbated. So are they also looking at, and including that in the cost of that project?
They have and, and yes, they are. And in the master plan, we asked Flansburgh, obviously, a master plan is very, very high-level conceptual to consider this. And so the master plan actually called for some head-in parking right in front of the Sanborn House, frankly, just as a way to say, hey, we're gonna need to add some parking. But we did ask the TAPE team to study all the options. They looked at many and they looked at the grade on site, they looked at the grade on High Street and actually came back with the landscape architect, who is Warner Larson, they're terrific. They also were the landscape architect at VO, again, a lot of school experience. And in fact, the solution that we suggested in the master plan is the best solution, which would add, I can't remember, is it 12, 14, something like that, spaces, head-in spots right in front of the Sanborn House. But of course, there's a long-term lease with the Winchester Historic Society. So, you know, we're gonna continue to engage with them as well and we need to have some conversations about, you know, what the, how providing parking in front of that building would then perhaps allow us to modify our current lease. Currently, we have parking, I'll say, in front of the Carriage House, meaning,
Adjacent.
Which is, it's really, as you approach the site, it's behind. It's near the garden, if you guys are familiar with the garden back there. That, that's really school district parking. But we have a lease agreement with the Sanborn House that allows them to use that when they need to. So if Central Office were to occupy that building, we're obviously gonna wanna want that parking and we need to create something else. So that's been evaluated. We have looked at things like alternative site access, there's some grade challenges there. But we can also look at maybe how the circulation works through the parking lot. So short, I'm not giving you the short answer, but yes, it's being evaluated and it's being drawn and it's being estimated.
And the person who's sitting on the working group, is that somebody who's familiar with the Sanborn House and their activities and their use of that space as well?
So...
To make sure we're being good neighbors also?
So we, because the, because the Historical Society is already party to a lease that's adjacent, they're not on the working group, but we specifically did reach out to them to let them know what we were doing and let them know about our schedule and so forth. And Mr. Clemson has some great relationships with the Historic Society. There's been some turnover there, I think, through COVID. But I was able to reach out specifically to Nancy Schrock, who's a former, you know, leadership there. She was in California at the time, but I got a nice email back from her, just very appreciative of keeping them, keeping them in the loop. Mr. Clemson gave a similar sort of just verbal update last night to the Historic Commission. So I think once we get to a point where we're comfortable with a design solution, we will absolutely, in a very kind of deliberate and thoughtful way, you know, engage more fully the Historic Commission and the Historic Society.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do we have any other questions from the members? Do we have any other questions from the members? Or any comment from Ms. Kirby or Dr. Ellen, or Dr. Hackett?
No, I think Chris summed it up beautifully. I think it was a very worthwhile exercise that we did, just beginning with just walking the building and seeing what needs and wants are, and then applying that to the different locations. So, we appreciated being part of that and having the conversation and just rethinking who we are, what we do, and how we do it, and can we, you know, improve upon that, and not just the here and now, but the looking out into the future. So, thank you.
And your comment just reminds me of one last thing I think it's important to say, which is that, given the inefficiency of this building, when central office was at Lynch, everybody had little offices. There were walls around people. And then when we moved to Parkhurst, almost by necessity, folks are sharing spaces. And I've enjoyed that because when I come here, I see you all talking to one another, or I'll approach a member of the leadership team and ask a question, and let's say, oh, I was just talking to so-and-so about that. What's, what I'm excited by is that the tenure you've had here in the building, I think, has kind of affected the way some people on this team think about how they work with one another, and there was actually a preference towards continuing to share space, so long as you have adjacent breakout space for those private meetings when necessary. But I was happy to hear that many team members here, in fact, enjoy sharing space, and they want to see that continue. So, that's what this program represents as well.
I, however, was not one of them.
[laughing]
To be going from 12,000 or 1,500 square feet or whatever, as I'm rattling around in right now, to 325, and in itself is going to be an adjustment for me, so I will. I would just say, you know, I, it was great to come into the process after you'd kind of done all the hard work, and just see how you had been thinking about it, and the involvement of central office people was obviously critical. And I would also, I've never worked with TAP-A, and they've been incredibly responsive. They are, they are really good listeners, which is pretty critical when you're doing any kind of building project, as you know. There's no, there's no delicate artist, artistry going on, no one's getting their feelings hurt. They really have listened to us, and that's been, that's appreciative, because it's, you know, can be, it can go a different way. So, so I'm glad I'm here when I'm here. I think this is exciting stuff anyway, regardless of where it goes, but I think that the comparative analysis between the two is a really, really good exercise. And just to some of the points about sharing space within a school, as you look at the gross square footage of 8100 with the Carriage House, I would anticipate that that would go up substantially, because there's going to be a grossing factor that MSBA is going to insist on, especially when you're talking about that separation and how you design that in not just interior, but also outside the building in terms of where do people park, what's the flow of business traffic to the super enhanced office versus traffic for the school versus bus traffic. I think that, I would imagine that there'll be some additional costs that would not be experienced at the Carriage House. So, it's going to be really interesting to see how it turns out. So, thank you.
Mr. Hopcroft?
Mr. Nixon, can you just give us a sense of how big the Carriage House is, just in ballpark terms?
So, I can't remember if it includes the basement or not. It's around 48, I think it's 4,900 square feet, but I don't know if that number includes the wing that's coming down. So, I, you'll have that information when you, when you get the packet. So, basically, the, what we have today is a Carriage House with a wing. If you imagine the property line along the back of Ambrose, I think there's a chain-link fence there, the homes on the other side. So, that's the back wing that's in really poor condition, a one-story wing. And what we're looking at is actually taking that down and creating a two-story wing. And then that actually satisfies the, not just the net, but the gross square footage with some space left over.
So, the 8100 would fit inside of it?
Yes.
Okay. So, is it 4,000 per floor or something?
I think it was, I think it was maybe 48, again, I have to look at the master plan. It's 48, maybe 4,900, and I don't think they included the basement.
Okay.
Yeah. But you'll have all that information-
Yeah.
-next meeting. Yeah.
Okay. Yes, I have to agree. I thought it was a very worthwhile exercise to go through, and I especially appreciated the contributions from all of, all of the central office team. So, and I just thought it was a good discussion and just understanding what we're looking at in terms of using space and how the team will work together just now and then going into the future. So, thank you very much. Any further comments or questions? Otherwise, I will move us on to the next agenda item. So, next we have a curriculum subcommittee update, and that will be leading into a summer professional development update by Dr. Ellen Emma and Vice Chair Bergstrom.
Thank you. You said you might pick us up?
Sure. So, I am just starting out with a slide to remind people on what the curriculum subcommittee is. This is drawn directly out of our school committee policy, so it's BDE-E. And so, our policy kind of dictates how this committee is formed and how it operates. We do meet periodically, most regularly, with the assistant superintendent, so with Dr. Ellen Emma. And we have been engaging in this process as outlined here for the past couple months at the end of the school year to hear presentations on staff. Number three is something that we have not always done through curriculum subcommittee. Occasionally, it has been done through the entire school committee. As we reach those programs of study in spring, we can discuss as a committee if we'd like to move that to the subcommittee, back to the curriculum subcommittee to just present to school committee, or continue forward with the prior practice that we have engaged in. The, we have not had any currently, any curriculum design or review. There have not been any major changes under consideration currently. If we do, this would be the committee that it would come through. And here we are, reporting periodically to school committees. So, that is, that is our mission. Currently, the members of the curriculum subcommittee are Chair Bolanese, myself, Dr. Ellen Emma, and we have had district-wide staff. We've been incredibly appreciative and enlightened by our own staff members, who have brought their expertise to present to the committee over the last couple months. It's been really exciting to see their engagement on topics and their excitement for improving their practice and the content in curriculum that they're able to bring to our students. So, that has been the most rewarding part of curriculum subcommittee. As we move forward, if there are any outside experts or community members, we may invite them to participate as applicable for feedback if we do review or we consider any curriculum.
Okay, so we just thought we'd start with kind of the big picture, because now we talk about what this committee does, but, you know, what do we think curriculum is? How do we operate in the district as we go through this process? So, there's really three main phases to the process, and the fourth piece, although people often, this is kind of a misconception about curriculum, that a program or a textbook or certain materials is what the curriculum is, but really, that should come at the end of your process. So, we try to follow the same process, kind of how we look at everything as we're planning, not just curriculum. You'll see when we talk about that with PD too. So, we begin, it's the kind of the backward by design process, the understanding by design. We begin with, what is it we want the students to know and be able to do? So, of course, we're driven by the state standards on that, our SEL standards. We've been doing a lot of work, really working to incorporate those so that it's a part of every day, it's not an add-on for both our students and staff, as well as our work over the past few years of bringing in the social justice standards. So, those kind of become, this is what we're trying to get to. And then our second piece is really to say, well, how will we know that they're there? What is our process as we go through it? So, how do we assess? And we're, try to be very clear of also breaking that myth that tests are the assessment, right? They are one type of assessment, and really trying to say, you know, trained educators are assessing every minute of every day. They're assessing what happens when they're doing a turn and talk for three minutes. They're listening to what they hear. They're assessing with what they do in their writing, what they do in their journaling, what they do when they reflect. And also, as you know, and we'll talk a little bit more about after, one of our big movements as a district is to say, you know, aligning to our goal, getting to that whole performance-based assessments. We're trying to get on Bloom's taxonomy far beyond that they just give us the information back, but what can they do with that? How can they apply it? How is it meaningful to the real world and to their lives? So, that's really our second phase, as we're thinking about designing curriculum. How will we measure it? And then our third phase becomes, okay, well, if we want them to get there, and this is how we're going to measure it, what kind of experiences do they need to have? How do they explore? How do they practice? What are our activities that we do to help them, to support them as we get there? If we're doing this really well, you know, the quote-unquote "end assessment" should never be a surprise, because everything they're doing along the way is giving us data and giving themselves data, where they are in their practices. And then, like I mentioned at the beginning, that last piece is, okay, now what resources, what tools, what do we need to get there, once we've been clear with all of these pieces? And of course, sometimes it's a textbook as part of what our resources are. Sometimes it's tech tools. Sometimes it's manipulatives, hands-on manipulatives that we need in the classroom. So, really, we should do this piece before we talk about now what should be driving us. You know, when I first started teaching in education for a long time, that's kind of been backwards, that the program drives us. And that's, we really want to be driven by, what do we want the students to be able to get to? That should be our mission, not what a publisher has laid out in a textbook or what one tech tool has designed. And we've had a lot of questions, so we just wanted to touch base. You want to talk about this piece, Michelle? I'm happy to jump in if you'd like.
Sure. So, we always are interested in, like Jen said, we do the backwards by design, so we're interested in what students are able to get to, but then the question is, but what do we do with students who struggle to get to that standard? What kind of supports does the district offer? And what do we do to have high expectations for all of our kids? And there are really three phases to that. The first phase is differentiation within the classroom. So, this is what happens every day in the classroom, where the teachers are able to do that assessment of their own students, and to be able to look around the room and really know their kids, and know who needs support in certain areas, and knows who needs extension in other areas. Then there are also additional and targeted supports and interventions with trained faculty. So, this is for students who maybe the differentiation within the classroom, they've, they've tried that, and the teacher themselves is looking for some support for a student. And so, we have experts in our buildings who can help design specific programs or offerings that are in small groups or one-on-one, and those students will get a little extra support in those areas. If we still have students who are struggling beyond that, there is the special education referral process, where students can be evaluated to see if it's not just an intervention that is perhaps needed to get them past a certain concept or a certain skill level. But this would be students who might actually have a diagnosed disability, and they would then be referred to special education. And Pam, did you want to jump in for a minute about that?
I think just to remember that our goal is to always support access into the curriculum and the standards, and that's what special education does to support. So, the key of this particular slide is the differentiation that needs to be ongoing and occurring to make sure that we're meeting the needs of everybody in front of us.
Yeah.
Can I ask a quick question? We don't use the TRT acronym anymore. What do we use to describe that team, that process?
So, some people do still use the TRT, but I think what you're referring to is the SST, about the students, yes.
Yes.
Do you want to talk about that, Pam? Or you want to talk-
Sure. So, good. That, you know, Chris makes me laugh, we go from TRT to SST to-
I mean, this was the slide where I was going to ask the question.
Yep.
Good fun acronyms as you go.
Sure. P, 504, sure. But SST, we actually were thinking about when we kind of have been looking to evolve the structure of that process, is the student support team. So, that we actually are thinking first about what do we need to potentially change or differentiate before we think about a referral into special education? So, that comes in kind of at that differentiation, potentially trained faculty, where we get a group of people together, we think about, what is this profile? What are we seeing? Are we seeing trends? Let's look at not just the MCAS, let's look at this entire student, what are we seeing? And then, what could we do? Who could we bring in to help maybe make some modifications in the classroom environment? Or do we need to think about additional practice and experiences for the student? And if we do, who do we get to do that, and how do we make that happen? And so, that's part of that process.
So, I appreciate that. This slide, to me, this slide is about the what? It has three whats on it, and SST is a little bit about the how.
Yes, right.
Right. Thank you.
And our goal of SST is always, what do we need to do to change? So, our goal is first to look at ourselves, the teacher, the coach, administration, whoever it is, we need to adjust first, to see if it's us, before we're providing something specialized or saying that a student, we need something to adjust with the student.
Thank you for saying that. Thank you.
And Pam alluded to this, I think, a real important point here, both for special ed and for our EL students, is that the whole goal is that we're getting them access to the general curriculum. It's not that they have something separate, the state standards are for everyone, and we need to do first what we need to do, and then we also need to do what the students need to be able to get them to those standards. And that, you know, anything they do in an individualized or smaller setting, they need to be able to apply back to the larger setting, because that's our whole goal, right? That they leave here independent and able to apply those skills to everything that they do.
And Jen, can you clarify, just, when you say what we need to do, you're talking about changing your practice?
Yes. So, from the classroom teacher to the coaches, to our supports, what the administration does to help the teachers, looking in the mirror first at our pieces.
So, it's not just providing the same thing over and over again, it's looking at it-
I hope it's never that.
Exactly. I just wanted to be clear.
Definition of insanity. Yes. Yep. So, just a kind of reminder, as we talk about all of these pieces, what our two district goals have been for a couple of years, really allowing us for the first time to go deeply with some of this work, and we know the research tells us, right, change takes meaningful change three to five years. And then, I would say, last year provided us some opportunities and silver linings to move ahead leaps and bounds with some things, but also not as much with some other things. So, for example, I think last year was a perfect opportunity that we could work more on Goal One, and we knew it was a huge focus because of what was happening in the world. Where I would say Goal Two, although so admirably, really still worked on by our teachers, wasn't the same, because clearly, all of the work we had done previously was for when people are in person. So, there was still tons of work on this, but it was more adjusting and flexibility than it was going deeper yet with this piece. Want to talk about these, Michelle?
Sure. So, these are some of the topics that the curriculum subcommittee has covered already since we've started meeting. We have looked at the performance-based assessments. Last year, I believe we asked every teacher in the district to try at least one performance-based assessment in their classroom. So, we had some teachers come in and share what some of those were, and what they learned about their students, and what the students learned about themselves by doing that work. We have been looking at elementary literacy and the new guidelines that the state has provided districts on early literacy, and about the screening for dyslexia and where we are with that. We have looked at the social studies standards that have come out, and that is a K-12 initiative, and how those are being implemented. Mr. Krhats and his team were there and really provided us a deep look at some of the materials that they're using and the overlap, particularly with social studies and social justice and diverse texts. We have heard here some exciting ideas that have even come from the students about book clubs and about some ways for our students to become involved in the process of actually participating in their own development of what they're learning and reading and doing in school as well, that fits in with our state standards still, but gives them some voice in that. We've looked at how literacy evolves in our districts, so not just early literacy, but how that- so not just early literacy, but um how that evolves over time, and um the standards um that we have for our students, not just K-12, or not just uh K-5, but K-12 as well. Um, we've been looking a little bit at SEL, and how the, the district doesn't want to um view SEL as a class in and of itself, but that it should be completely embedded in all the things that we do in curriculum, in our classrooms, in our hallways, in our buildings every day, and that it shouldn't just be an add-on, but really um part of what we do. And um, we've also heard um about the professional development that's tied to these areas, because we know that all of this begins with our teachers, and um with their own um thinking and education, and um interest and passion for all of these areas, and how they are constantly striving to be um better educators, and learn and grow in these areas too. Does that cover it?
I think that's perfect.
So what's next for the Curriculum Subcommittee? So these are um some of the topics that we expect to be covering in the next school year. So we'd really like to take a little bit deeper dive into those assessment practices. Um, as Dr. Ellen Emma mentioned earlier, since this is a backward by design district, I think it's really important, particularly for us as a school committee, to understand our assessment practices, to look at that um MCIEA data, which is a lot of what drives our understanding of performance-based assessment, our performance-based assessment work and professional development there. Um, differentiation in our classrooms, how we accomplish that, um, how we assess for that. Um, looking at grading for equity, this is um a little bit newer to both professional development and the curricular work that we're doing. So I imagine that would be an early look at that, and um um, just what our educators are thinking about that. Um, understanding a little bit more about standards-based grading and the literacy screening um that we're doing in the district. So that would all be covered under the assessment practices. We'll continue to look at um social justice and SEL, and how we embed that in all the work that we do throughout the district, which fits in really nicely also with our social, the new social standard studies, and the new civic standards that have come out. Um, we'd like to continue to hear about the student-driven materials and activities, and how we understand our students as partners in the uh curriculum process, and um have them hold us accountable also for equitable representation in um the work that we're doing. Um, as a committee, I, I imagine we're also really interested in the next one, which is uh the data gathering process. So we've talked a lot about what um the exciting work that the district does, but how do we measure that work? How do we know if um we're living up to our own standards in that work? So um, we'll begin to talk about a process to gather um what people are interested in learning more about, what's clear and confusing about our current curriculum, um, and what would be helpful to children. So this is really um a community outreach portion of um the Curriculum Subcommittee. And then, we'll also look at content-specific areas, K-12. If there's anything else any of the committee members are interested in learning more about that we haven't covered here, um, it is a long list for the next year. Um, but please get back to myself or Karen or Dr. Ellen Emma and let us know. Or if you have any questions about any of these now.
Is, is there a plan to publish this in some way? Do you see this going up on the website, or how? I don't want to put words in your mouth, but is there some messaging, some broader reach to the parent community around this?
So um Karen and I, in Curriculum Subcommittee, have spoken about um a way to provide a website that would provide both sort of the notes from our meetings, and um what the plan, the yearly plan would be. The meetings are always posted and open to the public to attend as well. So when these, just like our meetings are, they're not brought, they're not sort of um, well, we've been broadcasting them because of Zoom, but we'll have to think about that.
Yes.
So in the context of your presentation, I think this is really clear, and I appreciate it. If I would just say that if something like this slide were to get published somehow, I might think about changing that bottom paragraph to say, if I think what you're talking about is what are parents interested in? What's unclear or confusing to parents?
Yep.
As opposed to, if someone might read that and wonder if our students confused about the curriculum or and so on, but it's clear to me, you're, you're really talking about feedback to the parents.
The community, yep.
Okay, so um we purposely put these together because they should be connected. Whatever we're doing around curriculum, our professional development should be supporting it. That's part of, when we talked about the curriculum process, that's part of that kind of fourth step, about what tools, materials, um, what do you do to support to get there? Um, part of what we do, obviously, to support the teachers are the professional development pieces. Um, so we try to follow the same process, again, we try, i- it's, uh, if you have a common context that people are using for whatever you're working on, that same kind of backward process, um, it really helps people know um how you, ki- kind of a framework to hang things on. So we try to follow the same process for professional development that we do with curriculum. So we start with, you know, what do we want the teachers to know and be able to do? That's the beginning. So, you know, as a district, like our district goals drive these pieces. Of course, um, whatever the state standards are, or mandatory training, all of those pieces also drive that. Um, the latest research about, about best um pedagogical practices. Um, and really thinking about, um, it's really important to us that teachers are able to identify their own individuals. So just like we talked about the classroom and how important that differentiation is so important, um, the same thing is true for the teachers, right? We're all in, just as humans, we're all in different places on things. We have different levels of knowledge already. We need more support in certain areas, we have certain passion places, and then there are other areas we don't know as much about. So we try to begin with being very clear about that. And then, how do we, again, same process, how do we know that? And the ways that we know that is, you know, teacher identification themselves, telling us what they need, telling us how the PD was, saying what is the next natural step, um, what wasn't as helpful, um, their own plans, looking at like their evaluations, their observations, what they identify that they'll be working on, in conjunction with their evaluators, or their grade level team, or their departments, um, and certainly within the buildings. And obviously, our, both our student feedback and our data, if you remember a few years ago into the evaluation process, um, part of a new piece was that teachers had to collect student data, and give feedback to their evaluator on what that data said, and what they're planning to kind of do with that. So these are, these aren't the only ways, but these are some of our main ways that we measure, you know, how, how are people able to apply what they've learned? Because just like in the classroom, if the teacher talks, but the student can't do anything with it, it doesn't mean anything, same thing with PD. If we provide it, but the teachers aren't able to apply it, then we're not doing a great job with um our professional development, how we do it. And then what are some of the ways, and again, just some of the ways that we support? Again, if you want teachers to get here, how do you give them time to practice, to explore, to learn more about, to ask questions, to go try it? Um, so obviously, through our summer professional development, which we'll talk a little bit more about, um, before and after-school professional development we do, we always ask teachers for their feedback and when they want it to, because for different people, different things make sense for their schedules. Um, individual coaching, again, this bears repeating a hundred times at this table, thank you, thank you, for our additional support layers, the coaches, the um coordinators at the elementary level. There's just no way that teachers could get the help that they're getting if we didn't have those positions. It's been unbelievable. Um, and collaborative planning time, we build into our structures um some collaborative planning times, sometimes during the school day, sometimes after-school, some of both for some levels. Um, and then, of course, teachers know contractually, you know that teachers also have a certain amount of funding and opportunity and days that they're released, that they can go pursue something outside of the district that we may not provide.
Jen, can I jump in real quick?
Of course.
So one of the other things we heard at Curriculum Subcommittee about the coaching and the um coordinators, is that by um supporting and um having those, the teachers are also getting a more, um, the same message, that it's um, that there is a lot more um, as, they, they can understand similar things, especially at the elementary level between buildings. They don't feel as isolated in their own buildings either. They have a greater understanding of what's happening across the district.
That's a great point, so valuable, yeah. And then we do that same thing, so what resources or tools do we need to get there? Part of that's sometimes budgeting for our um professional development budget. Some of it is, we talked about at a previous meeting, how we changed with coaches there. Um, we had an uh MOA to be able to have them flex their year, so that we could get more professional development in the summers when teachers were asking for it. I can't say enough about our teachers in this district. It, now a lot of it's on Zoom, there's some in-person, there's some on Zoom, but um it looks like the school year is going on very often. I mean, some days there are hundreds of educators in PD, it's unbelievable. Um, so how do we kind of determine it? So first, we start with our, we try to always return to whatever our beliefs around it. Again, we want it to be differentiated. Um, there are, of course, some things everybody needs to work on. If you are a social studies teacher, and there's new social studies standards, everybody needs to work on that. But a lot of what we all need to do, we're in different places. But also joyful, we, we ask them to make the classrooms joyful and with their students, so we try to do that in the PD as well. Meaningful, um, we haven't done a great job if we haven't attached it to something that um they understand the why, uh, just like the students do. I remember when I first started as an administrator, I thought, nothing changed. I sat in a meeting and people were asking, well, why do we need to do this? It felt very much like the classroom. Um, so our job is always to eh make it meaningful bo- both by planning, collaboratively planning with them what we're doing, but also always connecting our work to the why. Um, standards-based and voice and choice. So those are the kind of big picture we try to keep in mind as we're planning it. And then kind of the different tools that we use, or the different data points to get there, are both their identification, our educators, we do surveys, through the coaching process, through individual, all these different meetings where we're with them, we get that feedback, and of course, evaluation. So if we notice a trend that a lot of people are setting a certain goal in a certain area, then on their evaluation, then we know we need to provide more professional development around that. Um, of course, the administrators' identification, we have, I can't remember, thirty-five or thirty-six evaluators in the district now.
Lots of them.
Um, and so the, we meet, and we also get feedback regularly about what are the needs that they're seeing through students, schools, of course. Oftentimes, they have a broader communication and context with parents than just in an individual classroom, so that helps us understand what the community is saying maybe means. Um, observations, conferences, uh, basically around our curriculum. Again, if we're changing something, or if there are new standards, we need to provide support around that. Um, and of course, tied to our district and our school goals. Um, student data, this is huge, right? Again, none of this matters unless students are able to do something with it, it's our sole purpose. Um, so their feed, not just what they do on assessments, but again, their feedback, what they tell us, what they say works for them, what they need more of or less of. Um, observations um in the classroom with how the students are able to do those things. We know this from our typical assessments, that doesn't always tell us the whole story. So what are we seeing? Um, and then, of course, like I mentioned earlier, we need to be in compliance with all state and federal guidelines, so sometimes there's professional development simply driven on that piece. Um, so, a couple things just in thinking about who our providers are. So it's so amazing what's really happened with this, is that somebody gets really, uh, it's a passion, or they get really um to become a, an expert on it, or they just want to be an explorer with teachers. We have so many educators running PD now, it's phenomenal. So I would say that's our, our biggest shift. Um, of course, administrators, the expectation is that everybody um does some professional development around something that's within their wheelhouse, or something they want to work on, particularly with one area, or their building, or um the coaches. This has been huge too, again, um due to being able to flex their schedules, thank you. Um, they do a ton more PD because they can flex their day, or they can flex their school year to just be able to meet um teachers' needs, and what, what they're telling us when they can do things is so important. Um, and around our instructional leadership, just really thinking about, again, our goal is to grow all educators, how do we provide that? How do we see ourselves first, all of those evaluators, as instructional leadership? Of course, all the management pieces need to happen, but first and foremost, all educators are instructors, and all educators are learners. So how do we continually work on those pieces for us? Um, and really, again, creating those new coaching positions has been, and coordinators, has been life-changing for what we can do. Um, and really thinking about how we sometimes grow leadership with uh teacher leaders. So all, all educators, again, are leaders and learners. Um, and so, how do we promote those different pieces for people to really become um able to provide professional development for other people in an area that they've really mastered? All right, so we're gonna talk about some other pieces. I think Jason's gonna chat with us. Seamus, would you mind passing your mic down?
Not at all.
Just so you can be hard, thank you.
Thank you, Seamus. And Lori. And Dr. Ellen Emma. Um, thank you. Uh, so in talking about social-emotional learning, uh, professional development, uh, we've broken it down into these four, uh, four categories. Uh, this summer, we have a little bit over twenty different um summer PD workshops just focused on social-emotional learning. Um, and m- most of them running more than once. Um, so um, we have a pretty um, a pretty large offering for, for our staff. Um, we've broken it down into uh introduction and reinforcement of Ruler Foundations and Practices, with Ruler being um one of our foundational um approaches. Um, we want to make, we need to make sure that our, both our new staff and um, and some of our staff that are continuing to learn in it have opportunities to do that. Um, understanding and uh responding to trauma and anxiety has uh obviously been a um spotlighted area um uh through the pandemic, and we'll, we continue to grow our practices in this area. Um, introducing and applying soc- uh social justice standards, um, now called the Learning for Justice uh standards. Um, this is um another foundational piece for our social-emotional learning uh practices for, for our staff. Um, and both new staff and staff continuing to grow in this area. And then, of course, uh supporting student identity formation and diversity. Um, so all, each of these areas, um, we have several different workshops that we are meeting our uh teachers' needs uh through this.
So we'll continue on with the theme, our most valuable resource are the people. And um the staff, as Jen has emphasized and indicated throughout the presentation, is nothing short of phenomenal. And I think that the hiring process, we continue to evolve, but we start from day one, telling new staff, sharing um who we are and how we get there together, and really emphasizing the power of the team, and talking about the supports that we have in place, and supports that they need, um, so that they can continue to learn and grow. So when we think about welcoming new staff into our schools, we again think about them coming from different places. Some are coming right out of school, some come with years of experience. So when we're devis- uh designing our program, thinking about the must-need, must-haves, and then those that we can be flexible, and letting um staff pick those workshops that meet them where they are around our goals of performance-based assessment, uh, social-emotional learning, uh, and differentiation. And really giving during this time, because it's very few precious hours that they have before they welcome students into their uh classroom community, it's about building those relationships, and understanding that it goes well beyond their department, their school, we're a community of learners, and it's pre-K through 12. So really giving them as much time to work together with their colleagues across the district. So when we think about supporting our new staff coming in, again, we have a two-year program that aligns- It aligns with the hours that Desi um has mandated so that we can renew our license and go from an initial to a professional and continue to um, you know, further learn and grow. So that first year truly is about connections, relationships, building them within your school community and then beyond. So they'll have opportunity to have a mentor that is assigned just to them. And depending on who they are, what their needs are, their past experience, the building um principals and, and um cases where it's appropriate, the directors, will work together to um assign a mentor. And the mentors apply for this position. It's a pretty big, awesome responsibility and it requires a lot of time because we want to do right by our new set staff. And um again, when we think about that first year, we have first-year teachers and then we have some that are coming in after six years. So there are tiers within that first year and the hope giving meaning, um sorry, um ensuring that the time that they have with their mentors, the time that they have with new staff um is relevant and meaningful. So each month at each of the different levels, elementary, all new staff will come together with mentor leaders and those are teacher leaders. And then Ellis, secondary, middle school, they'll come together once a month with mentor leaders and get to know one another and dive deeper into things. And then the same at the high school. The second year, we dive deeper into pedagogy content, interest-based. And so taking a look at who the group is, what do you need? So we survey them and then we work to find those um workshop opportunities that would be most helpful for the time that they do come together each month. And who leads those? The teachers. So it's really a nice collaborative um eh eh experience. And again, I think it really highlights who we are here in Winchester and allows staff to see the many supports that they have. And um when we think about teachers in their first three years, again, we want to make sure they have what they need. And um we ask that all first three-year teachers um take two uh courses and they are SEL and differentiation. The great news is, we run them and we go through Framingham State, so the price is right for them and we do it right here within districts, so it's like the Bonanza. What's in it for us is that we really can work with our staff and dive in real deeply about what it is we want for our students so that that experience across the grade levels can be similar. So they're creating UBD lessons that backwards by design. So again, they're not working in isolation. It takes a tremendous amount of time and effort and energy, resource, expertise to create these. And throughout their experience in these courses, we are mirroring what the expectation is in the classroom. So it's, we've been receiving good feedback since we've been doing it and every year, I believe, we get better and better, if I don't say so myself. And it's just a great way for us to, to connect with the staff, to see and hear. This is where we are, this is what we need as we go forward. And then in that first three years, we ask that they show proficiency in technology. Again, there are multiple, many uh workshops that are given that, you know, highlight on the tool itself, but more importantly, how do we embed that into the day-to-day practice? And Jen has said it over and over, these instructional coaches have been a lifesaver. And I think last year in that chaotic year, there wasn't ever a better time for us to support our new teachers with these coaches who really understand our mission, who really are master teachers, who can support teachers in a manner that suits them. So those LOAs that were hired on Labor Day, Sunday of Labor Day weekend, they got what they needed from their colleagues within the building, the administrators, but those instructional coaches were alongside them all throughout the year. So it really benefited our students tremendously. So again, we thank you so much for that support. And then, like any district, um we follow Desi requirements and there are license requirements that all educators in public schools must hold an active license. And there are a certain number of credits that we all must attain, obtain and it's very specific about how many of those um credits, or they call them PDPs, need to be for EL learners and for special ed and for our content and for our pedagogy. So we work with staff to offer reminders that this is a condition of employment. It matters and we um, you know, make sure that they have what they need. So when it is time to reapply or re-in, renew, um they're good to go.
Quick question, Lori. Mentor program isn't open just to new teachers. It's any teacher new to the district?
Any teacher new to the district.
So it doesn't have to be somebody in their first three years just looking to advance? It's everyone goes through that and gets a mentor and no matter how long they've been teaching?
Correct. And then that first year, and then it just depends, do they go to five meetings? Do they go to four? But that connection, that one-to-one is there from day one.
And how do student teachers fit into this? We, we had, it seems like to me, we had a lot more student teachers last year than we've had in the district in the past and a lot of places, they really added value. Did they get any mentor or coaching or are they able to access this professional development?
So you made me think of something else, so thank you. So yes, they have access, they can participate in as much or as little as they want. Their mentor would be their cooperating teacher that they're working with. Um, but you bring up a good point. We hire many leave of absences, right? And some are for the year and some are short-term. And again, we encourage those people to participate in the numerous um PD opportunities that are available. Come to the staff meetings so that they are part of the community. And just so that you know, those that are here a full year, they deserve and we give and we want them to have it feedback. So they are part of the evaluation process and that is, again, helpful for them, helpful for us and most importantly, our students. But it allows them, if things do work out, and in many cases it does, that they remain on for a second year. They, again, they have been part of the process like any other teacher in the district and they can easily transition into the second year.
And then the PD offerings that have a special education focus. Um, some of these are more important to teachers working within special education and others are open to everybody. So working kind of not necessarily up and down through this list, but for example, training on administration of the digital assessment library is very much geared to special education staff and um speech障人士, pathologist, school psychologists, not necessarily general education teachers. However, the de-escalation trainings, the continued work that we're doing um with Landmark, Triumph and Aspire, the trainings that we're doing on specific learning disabilities, executive functioning, running IEPs, um those are open to anybody in the district that wishes to participate in that PD. We're really looking, um the focus of the PD um is really to, how do we support students with disabilities? Um, and how are we working to support associated manifestations of the disability within the general education classroom setting? So what might this look like in a general education setting? What does the staff, be it special education or general education, need to have at their fingertips to be able to support that student? How do we, and that kind of ties back to that differentiation? What do they have to have at their fingertips? How do they look at some, at a student that might be having a hard time? What do they need to know? Oh, I know that I can offer a walk, I could offer alternative seating. I know how to go over and kind of cue this, this uh student to refocus or to re-engage in this lesson. I know that I could offer a different um accommodation, um a different book, uh something uh on a device, I can't even think of the word, on a device that might accommodate that different learning. And so we're really working with the staff to understand kind of ownership by all and not necessarily just the special education teacher. That if a general education teacher, and I, I think, um I probably should have put the co-teaching on this too because I think that the co-teaching has just been so hugely important to making sure that kids have access points in. Because what it has done is it truly has leveled the playing field. To Jen's point, not leveled the playing field for the students, which is what we want, but it's leveled the playing field for the staff, for them to reevaluate and to say, I know how, I know what, I know who to go to and really looking at that. Um, we have, have uh this summer in particular, but previous years, we have provided very specialized training in um different reading programs, literacy programs, Wilson, Orton, Gillingham, RAVO, LIPS, visualizing and verbalizing. Um, we've also done a lot of work um with math and differentiating math skills. So a lot of the PD that was offered in the spring is being replicated for access for the staff. Um, so things that we ran once will be rerunning in case staff have not had a chance to participate and wish to participate in that. So the special education focus, I guess my takeaway is that we um, we drill down, open to all, but then we drill down based on specific needs um for the staff.
Could you just give us a sense of how many staff members are participating in those specialized reading trainings over this summer?
Um, yeah, can I get back to you on that, Seamus? We have a, um, I have a transportation issue right now, sorry.
Absolutely.
Sorry, um multitasking. Um, I ha, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but we have, all of those that are, that I put there, we have several staff attending each of those areas.
No, that's, that's a great answer.
Yep, sorry.
No, no, that's for.
And there was the early literacy series this spring as well. Jen, do you remember how many staff attended that?
There were, Oliver, sixty staff members in each of those trainings.
Yep. That's what I remember seeing.
And um Pam or Lori, what do, what kind of um special ed professional development is required of general education um uh teachers either by us or by the state?
So they need, staff needs to have fifteen PDPs in order to have their recertification. Um, and then I would say.
And that's every how many years?
Five.
Yep. Yep. I think one of the things um that has been really important, kind of thinking about the PDPs, Michelle, is that we've been very, very fortunate in this district to bring different um speakers, nationally recognized uh speakers. So we have uh Sarah Witt, we've got Lisa Decker coming in on Friday. It's open to everybody, but particularly with the more specified um work that we've done with Landmark, Triumph and Aspire, we start with a core group and then expand it out so that we're, we're really drilling down for um disability-related skill sets and needs, but then bringing it out to teams of teachers, related service providers. Um, and we, we do that very thoughtfully to make sure that we are providing opportunities for everybody to have that kind of experience. So we have um at, at the uh middle school, we have a social worker from Triumph that we've worked with now for two years that um works with our partnership staff, but then equally goes and works with different teams of teachers to support having students in uh, in classrooms. And how could they kind of in the moment support a student? And then the key to that is the ability to come back and have a follow-up conversation. So you've given me an idea, you've done, you've given me feedback, but then for the staff member to say, oh, you know, he's still in the building, I can catch him for five minutes and then we can problem solve kind of right then and there for feedback about what we could do. Um, and we've been very, very fortunate with that.
I think this is your last slide, right?
It is.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
So this is focused a lot on teachers. So I have questions about ESPs and our administrative assistants. So I'm curious to know, are our ESPs getting you suggestions by the last school day in April, which is I think their deadline? And, and are you having good conversations and are they generally pleased with some content that they can engage in over the summer?
Yes, so we survey more than once and they give us feedback. Um, it, it's interesting, and Lori, jump in. Um, I, that's a, a little bit more of a transient population than our educators.
Right.
Um, but I would say uh like when we say, I mean, than our teachers, because when we say educators, we certainly think of everybody, like that the admin assistants as well and that they're giving feedback on what they need and we're developing the individualized or specific for them as well. As well as having them in, for instance, like Google Forms and, you know, um Google Slides or the, the PD that teachers will be taking sometimes is, is the same PD. Social justice, for example, last year, we required that for everybody, admin assistants, ESPs, teachers.
So that's where I was going with it because for our administrative assistants, they're actually supposed to be directly working with you, Lori, and uh there, there's a requirement for them to participate, but they're welcome to make suggestions. I think some of their time can be self-directed. We kind of have two different clauses in that contract. But when I see things like de-escalation training and I think about how, the moment that a student walks into a building, who knows who they're gonna interact with first, right? Could be a teacher, could be uh not a te, not their teacher, a teacher in a hallway, could be, so maybe a student is tardy for some reason, stressful situation. The first person they see is an administrative assistant behind the desk. So um I'm interested in just understanding how the con, I know on the ESP side, there was specific interest in making suggestions. We said, okay, but you gotta work to a deadline and I think it's the end of April. So i- i- is that a robust process and are they happy and engaged with, with, you know? Are you pleased that you're getting good suggestions and, and are, is it working well? And then with respect to the admins, there's a little less time there that they have available, but is there a good sort of working relationship in terms of administration being clear about the core things we want them to be taking advantage of?
So I'm gonna be brutally honest, we can do better and we're trying.
Cause I'm delicately dancing around.
Right, and I'm not. Um, we, we absolutely can. And I think it comes from a, a variety of places. One, it's just mindset. It's understanding that you are an educator. Second grader, just set us, you know, set the tone for today. It's every one of us, we all have a different role, different title, but it's all of us together that make the best experience. Crossing guards right into the caps, every custodian, we all are there and that makes the best for uh experience for our students. Having said that, it's, so it's that mindset that we need to change and I think that just the clear mandates going along, these are our district-wide goals. So having that minimum number has been a luxury or something that we cherish and we hope going forward um that it, it continues in this way because we're able to go right directly back. This is a district-wide goal, you're an educator and part of it and this is what the expectations are. So that has helped, but we can do better there about the different kinds of offerings that we have and being more proactive versus reactive. And I think right now, we're more of that. Something comes up and, oh my goodness, so last year was a change in procedures for Munis for the admin assistants and we had to come together, right? So it's all of those kinds of things. Um, but if we could get people to think that Google Forms, that's perfect, Google Suite, there's something in there for me, whether I'm an ESP or um an admin assistant. The ESPs, we've been having many conversations around how we can improve, but as Jen said, that's a very transient population for a variety of reasons. But one big reason is because they're taking teaching jobs. So this, they're getting their licenses and they're getting experiences and then they want to be part of a classroom. So we want to capitalize on that because truly, we can do better there in developing them and getting them to be more part of the experience so that we can grow them and they can step right into some of these positions. Because truly, if we look at our diversity, which the, we're very, it's minimal, but that is the uh population of educators, that is our most diverse. So we can do better and when we're looking at some of the new roles that we're adding, or not ru, new roles, but just taking a look at, for instance, the out-of-district role. How can that? How can that role play more of a part in working with ESPs and developing them? So it's on our, um, you know, radar.
So Chris, it's kind of an interesting thing to think about, the de-escalation training. We do very specific de-escalation training, um, we use safety care, it's done yearly, it's a mandated thing that we do. We have, every building has a core group that are certified in that, in, um, in those strategies. One of the things, talk about unintended kind of consequences. Through the SEL class, we have been offering, um, additional mindfulness training. Which has very self-directed training. And when you think about kind of mindfulness, you think truly, or I think truly, just in terms of myself and my breathing and. But what it does is it teaches you self-pacing de-escalation. Your ability to kind of recognize as you're maybe ramping up and kind of strategies that you're putting in place. That believe it or not, ties right in to the de-escalation trainings. Because they've had different training on how to actually make sure that they themselves perhaps are going into some of the training. So we don't limit, and I think that's really important is that particularly with the ESPs. Um, we have a lot of turnover with the ESPs because they are getting hired fast on us. But we don't limit any of the opportunities for them. We make sure that they have the exact kind of same entry points in to the best that we possibly can. It is challenging when we hire mid-year. It is challenging because typically some of that de-escalation training we have done earlier in the year. And we have to come back and get a group together and make sure that we're moving forward with it. But we're constantly trying to reassess and make sure that, that we have, um. Entry points and access points in for everybody so that, to your point, when somebody comes into the building, how, who? Who do they know? And if they don't know how to deal with it, who can they get that they know? So that the kids really, you know, don't have a moment.
And really just to zoom out, it starts right to at the orientation process. So really thinking about what are their needs at these different roles that they come in on and what can we do to better support that? And then also taking a look at the evaluation tool because that makes a big difference. So as we're looking at, you know. Further developing this group of educators, how can we make our tool reflect that better?
Got it, thank you very much.
I just wanted to add too, we didn't, we're not gonna bring it up on the slides, but in your packets was a list of, and that's not everything, but that's where we are right now. More things will be added because we, you know, we're again trying to like Lori says, mirror the classroom, right? You constantly use your incoming data to, um, schedule things. So, um, if there, anyone's interested in any of them, please, you know, let us know, we'll make sure that you get the location, um, times and/or. Um, Zoom links, because we're offering, we also asked our educators what, uh, modalities they preferred. And, um, just like with some of our students in our new summer program. Uh, some families and some teachers are away, but now they're able to participate when they weren't able to before because they also have access that way now. So, um, we're happy to have you join in person or virtually. So let us know if anything's of interest and, um, you know, we can keep you updated too. Actually, since everybody's on Google, we can just share the professional development calendar so you can see the new things that are added too.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Terrific, that's what I was going to ask about.
Anyone looking for a little fun this summer, we've got it.
Do we have any further questions? Okay, with that then I will move on to, um, the next item on our reports and discussions, which is, um, an update on the American Rescue Plan Act. Um, an inquiry by Senator Jason Lewis. And Mr. Brady, do you have anything on that, please?
Sure, just a really brief update, uh, Senator Lewis had reached out to us just to inquire if we had. Particular feedback in terms of what this approximately five billion dollars that's coming to Massachusetts should be spent on. It's been set aside, so there'll be some public hearings coming up likely in the fall, there aren't any dates that are set yet. But we are also welcome to reach out to him in advance with thoughts or to have a discussion about it. So he's welcoming our input and just making us aware that this is coming up. And just to anyone else listening, it's obviously a, a process that, um, all constituents are welcome to be engaged in. So it is not a small amount of money and it's somewhat unprecedented, so it's certainly worth getting involved. Uh, they wanna hear from the community and in terms of what those resources should be used for. And I'll continue to keep us updated as the process evolves.
Great, thank you, any questions about that?
I just have a comment.
Yes.
And a thought, which we scratched the surface of at our, one of our town meeting sessions. When we talk about an infusion of one-time cash, as welcome as it is, I always like to balance that with one-time costs. And so I am, I hope to learn a lot about this quickly, I'm kind of, I'm ignorant about what restrictions there are on the ARPA funds as they come from Washington. But I'm also i- i- a little ignorant of where the discussion sits right now in Beacon Hill. I know Charlie Baker was looking to grab half of it and Beacon Hill said, no, you don't. But there, there will be some restrictions Beacon Hill sets aside on this. And this isn't, of course, just for schools, it's, it's to be spent across the board, right? If this were literally just school money and was only going to districts and you split it evenly among all the LEAs in the state. It's about fifteen million dollars per district. But when we had the, um, uh, I think it was the, the, um. What was President Obama's name for, um, his SEEA program, I wanna say No Child Left Behind, that was his predecessor.
Race to the Top.
Race to the Top, thank you. Um, when the Race to the Top discussion got started, you know, it, there was a lot of excitement about how much money that might mean. But it was really more about having a seat at the table for the discussions. And at the end of the day, you know, Winchester got nothing. But even if you took that money, which sounded like a lot and you divided it evenly among all the districts, it was like one or two million bucks. That's money, but, you know, we're, we're a big district and we have a big budget. So I, uh, my only reaction right now is, um, one-time infusions of money are really appreciated. But I always tend to think about balancing those with some one-time costs. Else we have to figure out what we do structurally to sustain those expenses. That was it.
Okay. Um, I'm actually going to ask if we could take a, like, a little three-minute bathroom break.
Chair's leaving the room, eh?
I, that's what I was wondering.
Motion to adjourn till eleven thirty?
Sure.
To recess?
Just for a recess. Yes, do we need a roll call, though?
I don't think so.
Okay, all right.
And that's only two minutes, just so.
Yes, I can do two minutes.
Back together again?
Yeah, it's good to have that option.
And they must love having, she must be a win-win.
Get you together, I think so, yeah, they, they have a nice.
Tap, tap, I believe we have everybody back together again, so we will go ahead and reconvene. Um, and it is eleven thirty-four. Um, so we will now move into the action items, beginning with a vote. And the first item on our list is a vote to approve the Wilder School. Uh, we have Dr. Ellen Emma again and Ms. Jessica Gregory here to, uh, to speak to this.
Uh, actually I think Dr. Hackett will be speaking on this.
You do?
Dr. Hackett.
So, uh, along with a couple of other items on your agenda, this was a item that was slated for your June fifteenth meeting. Um, at that point, uh, Dr. Evans had reviewed the materials that were submitted by Jessica Gregory, who's with us, uh, who's the founder and director. Of the, uh, Wilder School. You have all those materials in your packet. Uh, we have, uh, both Dr. Evans independently, uh, from me, have gone through, uh, have looked at the curriculum program that would, would be offered. And would be recommending, uh, approval, um, of the Wilder School to operate as a, as a, essentially the private school, uh, in Winchester. So, um, that's the recommendation. Um, you may have questions, I, I don't know, um, I'm assuming everyone's had a chance to look at the packet because you had that, those documents for, for a little bit now. But I'm sure, I don't know if Jessica would like to come to the table and, but if, if you say a couple of things about, you know, who you are, what your mission is. And then, um, if the committee has any questions about the program itself.
Certainly, um, I had a, a, a brief, you know, seven to nine minute presentation. Uh, but given the length and duration that you've had of my materials, I won't re-inindate you with the same information. Um, just to say, thank you for having me, um, I am Jessica Gregory, I'm the founder and director of the Wilder School. We are, uh, we classify ourselves as a micro school. So, uh, something that will never really expand beyond, uh, our K through eight, our K through twelve program will never expand. Really larger than a hundred and fifty students. Uh, this fall, we are looking to open our doors as an elementary school, uh, serving ages six through ten. Uh, and our current enrollment, uh, because of the limbo that we've been in, has been limited to my own two children who are ages seven and nine. Uh, we do have, uh, a guide, what we call a guide or what is traditionally known as a teacher onboard. And we have leased, um, space at Saint Mary's School on the rear side of their property, there's a yellow building they call the cottage. So we have, uh, space secured in that way, which is affording us, uh, use and, uh, access to their playing field, their playground. Um, but also a nice, uh, well-suited, uh, space for, for children to learn and grow. Uh, so may I ask, uh, what questions you have?
I have a question more for our team than I do for you, we're welcome.
Thank you.
Very exciting venture. The last time the school committee, um, took up, uh, this kind of an option was actually the big year before I got on the school committee, it was about two thousand eight, two thousand seven. Sorry, Dave, thank you, two thousand eight, two thousand seven, the Esara School, um, was looking for a similar approval. I cannot recall, um, with our approval, what sort of obligations are on us in terms of any sort of follow-up due diligence? Um, Esara is a larger program than what certainly you're aspiring to be right now. Um, and I think in our information you provided to us, we don't have Winchester, we don't have Winchester students enrolled right now.
Correct, to date I have not had any interest from any family located in Winchester.
So I think there were questions the last time around things like transportation obligations, but certainly that's more focused on the student. I think there were some questions about what obligations do we have in terms of sort of checking in with them on some regular basis, once they get up and operating? Are we making, we as a district, through you, the superintendent, are we making some representation to DESI? About them, not only in their status today as they apply, but even once they open their door? So that, that's a very broad question about any sort of obligations on us moving forward in terms of the. Our sort of shared care and feeding with this program. So I don't know if you or Dr. Ellen Emma could speak to that?
I, I can just say the short answer to your question is yes. While the approval, um, is truly to, um, to meet the requirement around attendance, uh, student attendance requires student attendance. There is an oversight responsibility, um, in, in a general sense, to make sure that the school is doing what it says it's going, going to do. So in some places there, um, there have, where there's a lot of school, private schools. Uh, the administration actually does some site visits over the course of a year, a couple of site visits, a couple of check-ins, uh, to just kinda. Uh, see the program and, and match it against, uh, what was, uh, what was said that the program was gonna be. Uh, clearly you are in a little bit of a different situation for year one as, as it stands, but, um, it is not as, it is. It's a formality for the approval. It, it, the department language and the advisory came from the commissioner's office, which I, um, gave you a link to, is interesting because it, there's. It's very difficult to deny, uh, a request to be common approved private school. However, you still have a responsibility, um, from an oversight standpoint. So that would imply that if you, we were to go out and the school looked nothing like, uh, what they said it was going to represent it, or we, we had a lot of concerns. Then there'd be some kind of mechanism which is not, uh, written anywhere within the law. That you would have to have a conversation about whether or not you're gonna continue to support the approval. So, um, it is, it is a responsibility of, of the school that, uh, of the town that does approve. Um, so it's something to be mindful of, obviously this is, um, still, uh, this is day eight or nine for me. Uh, I know we have other schools, I don't know whether we've had any kind of process internally, a lot of towns don't either. Uh, there's just kind of a, you know, a good faith, uh, trust. There's just kind of a, you know, a good faith trust that the schools are operating well. And generally, you kind of know if the schools are within your community, you hear feedback about what's going on with the program, or you know students who are, who are part of it. So, but it's a good question, and it is, it is part of the, part of the responsibility of the school committee.
And Dr. Ellen Emma, do we, do we have a formal point person for Asara? Is there some sort of check-in? That's you, okay, so then you know where I'm going with this, would be with approval, this would be.
We'll become friends.
Wonderful.
It helps me know we're, we're clear on the responsibilities moving forward.
Like I've been to Asara several times, I annually meet with either the director or one of their, they're born, like a central office administrator around professional development and those pieces.
And then, I guess I do have one question, which is, you were pretty clear in the information provided, as you talked about students with special needs, and that that's not something you feel you can accommodate right now? So the question I would have is, if, if you take on a student who, let's say, then begins to demonstrate some, some needs for an IEP, that's not a Winchester-based student, but they are going to school in Winchester. I am, I would presume that the responsibility to provide support services would be on the sending district or the home district, but I am not 100% sure about that. I'm hoping someone at this table is.
Similar to school choice, and school systems that participate in school choice, the short answer again is yes. It would be on the sending school to provide the resources to support the students' program.
Okay, great. Even if, even if the provision of services might come from Winchester in a particular situation, the reimbursement would still come from the sending district, correct?
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further, Mr. Hopcroft?
If I could follow up on the comment, Dr. Hackett, there's no, there's nothing in law about what to do once a program is established, Asara, or your program or another program. Is that practical? Yeah, I know, Dr. Ellen Emma becomes best friends with them, but.
Best, I mean, you seem probably best.
Or friends. But if a friendship sours because things aren't going well, is there a practical next step, or?
That's a good question, I mean, like Frank said, there's, it's ambiguous. It's never happened in this district or in my prior ones, so I have no practical experience with that. I'm assuming that piece is there in case there was something really concerning happening in the school, but we'd have to find out what that mechanism is.
And hopefully with a friendship, it never does happen.
Right, exactly. I keep my friends.
Just an odd loose end out there.
It would be a call to the department.
Yeah.
I, I'm sure there've been cases where that has happened, I'm just not familiar.
Yeah, because schools fail.
Right, right. Generally, generally.
I understand.
Well, we hear about that in the context of charter schools, but just to be clear, this is not a charter school application. So it's a little bit, what I do, what I am aware of is sort of not directly relatable to this.
Well, in higher ed institutions fail, so you see it in context.
Yes.
And currently, if your school were to fail, I'm not sure what you'd do with your own children. So that would be, I'm kidding, I'm sorry. So there's a lot of pressure on you to make sure it doesn't fail, is my point, right?
I have a lot of motivation to succeed.
Yes, you do, yes, you do.
Just another question, and thank you for your proposal. I was impressed reading through it, and you had a lot of really important detail that I appreciated, having read some other applications for particularly charter schools that are starting up. I was just curious about your board and where you see that going, and what size you're hoping to achieve eventually, because obviously you're starting with a smaller board, rightly so, but kind of what do you see as your optimal level there?
So optimally, I'm going to, as, as the school grows, we will elicit organically individuals who have various levels of expertise, and various different topic levels. For example, it would be wonderful if we could obtain someone organically who has an expertise in development. Others could be curriculum development or various things. And that those individuals would say, I'm, I'm invested in this school, say my children go to here, or I'd like my children to go to here, and I'd like to help grow this school beyond its current capacity. And those are the individuals who I'm, I'd like to incorporate into the board. I don't have a set number or of individuals, or even a set, set of expertise that I'm looking for. Development happens to be one, but someone with an educational background, a very strong progressive educational background is someone that I'd have a lot of interest in, just so that we could ensure that not only are we growing beyond our humble beginnings, but that we are a few different things. One is diverse. My family and I relocated from the metro DC area in September during the pandemic. And the school that we came from was a Title I school, and in that school was, it was a magnet program, but a subset of that was an immersion, Spanish immersion program. It was beautifully diverse, and that was something that was celebrated. And in our relocation, we really haven't found that yet. So I would like to make that a part of who we are, and a part of our heartbeat. So those kinds of elements, to me, are important in kind of our long-term growth. And while we, our doors will never be busting at the seams, you know, 100 to 150 students is a pretty, pretty humble beginning, or a humble, like, place to grow to, but my thought is that this would be a very diverse group, and that our board of directors would allow us to get to that, that place, as well in a financially sustainable and, and another kind of sustainable way.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? With that, I'd welcome a motion.
Motion to vote to approve?
In a second.
And I think it's not a roll-call vote now, it's just vote, so.
So you're calling the vote?
Yes, yes, calling the vote. Thank you very much, and best wishes to you.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Okay, our next item on our agenda is a vote to approve the school committee 2021-22 meeting calendar. And we had looked at this for the first time back on June 1st. So does anybody have any further comments on the draft, now that you've had it a few weeks?
I did.
Yes?
So I have a suggestion. Well, I have a thought, and then I guess I could make a couple of suggestions. Thinking about our usual, thinking about how these second, fourth Tuesdays fall with respect to the school calendar, school breaks, holidays, vacations, and so forth, and thinking about all of our budget work. So we are required by charter, we have to vote our budget by the last day in January, turn it over to the town manager. Of course, we have a new superintendent who's quickly coming up to speed. Our January is a pretty busy month, and from time to time, we find a calendar like this, where if you look at the draft, we only have one meeting scheduled in December, for obvious reasons. You know, the leadership team, I'm presuming, will be really busy in November, working with you, Dr. Hackett, and putting together some draft recommendations. My gut is telling me we need to find either a second meeting in December, and maybe it's not on a Tuesday, to either to make progress on some interim budget discussion, or, or that's a third meeting in January. My observation is just going to be, I don't see us getting to a vote on the budget with one meeting in December and two in January. And I was just going to ask you if, I was presuming that, like, maybe the January 25th would also be a date where you would have the public hearing on the budget, as we usually do. So it just feels light to me, not that we need to figure it out now, but I wanted to throw that out there.
So I think I had contemplated that, and I originally had another meeting in on January, and I, and for a separate public hearing. But yes, I think that we would most certainly add another meeting at some point in December or January, and that as we draw closer to that time, that we would address that.
I hear, I think I hear what you're saying, Chris. You're asking if we might want to just put two tentative placeholders in, so that we could block those days, both for our calendar and for the town government calendar?
That's right, and because this is going to be public-facing, even if we say, you know, in December, we pick a date and say, possible budget meeting to be confirmed, and, you know, you do it in January, possible budget meeting, something like that. It's going to be a helpful reminder to us, helpful reminder to the community. You know, again, we, Tuesdays are kind of our home base, but when we've had conflicts, we tend to look at Thursdays, given other committee meetings that others serve on Monday, Wednesdays can be sort of difficult. So I wanted to throw that out there.
Would we like to settle on a date right now?
I would support holding a date on our calendars.
That's fine.
It's always easier to let them go than to.
So December 14th is the second Tuesday in December, so we do have December 7th. Depending on how that works with central offices' calendar.
Or you say six p.m.?
Or like idea of budgeting.
Or to Chris's point, we could do the 16th, and do it just as a budget meeting, separate from a committee meeting.
Which I think we've done in previous years.
And Dr. Hackett comes in from, you're on a slightly different budget schedule in Braintree, I think.
Very much a different budget schedule.
And so there'll be some.
All of a sudden, I'm nervous about the budget, so. Sorry, I think I'm behind a week.
I didn't mean to do that to you. Well, let me ask Dr. Ellen Emma then, because you've, you've been in on these fun conversations then with other superintendents. Do you, you know, given how, given what you're talking about in November, do you see a second meeting in December being more helpful than pick a third meeting in January? I kind of lean towards December, just because it kind of keeps us on a good cadence, and maybe helps us be more prepared. If we're doing an extra meeting in January, that's more like playing hurry-up offense, and we may have to do it, right? If we're just not prepared. Does December feel more planful than January? What's the word I'm looking for?
That's a good word. Yeah, I think it all, it's like backward by design. I think it all depends when we open the process and start the process, when we have meaningful information for you to be in a place to be ready to share that. And/or if we had like a December 7th meeting, shifting all the regular December stuff to that meeting, leaving the 14th more for budget, just to give a little more time, so.
I like that, I think that's what Michelle was suggesting, that might be a way to do it. I, I like that idea, if we, if that generally works with folks.
We're assuming 6 p.m.?
Yeah.
Yes.
December 14th?
7th and 14th.
December 7th.
So it would be back-to-back?
Yeah, I think that will work.
Okay.
Is that okay?
We'll drop in December 7th.
Could I just ask a newbie question? The, the week of Thanksgiving, is that generally a good week to meet, or is it? Some places take their Thanksgivings very seriously, coming from the South Shore. Rival football and alumni breakfast and.
I'm here, I'm available.
I'm available, okay.
It's a school day.
Yeah.
That is an option.
Doesn't matter to me, I just want to make sure that we're, as we line up what the future meetings would be going into December. So if we hit the 23rd, which would be probably budget-light, but.
I think it would be, so, so, sorry to interrupt, but I mean, just thinking about past years, so typically, there's some heavy, you may be having some budget meetings with some other people around the table, but we typically wouldn't be, short of maybe, maybe floating some new, in the abstracts, some new concepts. We could, I mean, I am available on November 23rd, that's.
We're already scheduled on the 23rd. I think we're.
We are scheduled for the 23rd.
Yeah, we're scheduled on the 23rd, that's why I'm asking.
He's asking if that's a.
No, I mean, I'm just, that, that's okay for me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you need to make a motion, if you need to have a seven?
Uh, yes.
We have consensus?
We have consensus on the 7th.
Did we want to add a January holder, placeholder also, or are we all set? Because we only have one in February also, because of February vacation.
But we need to have this by the end of January.
The thing about January is we also do post a snow day for the public hearing. This, of course, COVID is an exception. So the past year and a half, that hasn't happened, but when we post the public hearing, we also schedule and post in case of, and that's happened twice since I've been on the school committee, where basically if it's a snow day and school is closed, we don't have that public hearing that night.
So out of curiosity, now that we're still allowed to do remote meetings, I wonder if we could just shift to a Zoom meeting, instead of canceling a meeting?
We have that capability, I guess, through April of 22.
I'd use support.
As a backup.
As a backup, yep.
As a backup on the scheduled day, should it be canceled because of snow, in other words, not Zoom on a second day?
Right, as a backup.
Okay.
So we are, just to clarify, we are adding a December 7th meeting, regularly-scheduled meeting, and making the focus of the December 14th meeting purely budget.
To permit, yeah, to permit more budget discussion on the 14th, yeah.
And we will have the capability to make a future January meeting a remote meeting, potentially, is as need be.
If there's a snow day.
Right.
And we'll have a better sense of that in late October, I'm sure.
And that would apply to any, any snow day.
Yeah.
December, February.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I'm happy to make a motion that we approve the calendar of regular meeting dates for the school committee for 2021, 2022, as amended, with an addition of a meeting at 6 p.m. on December 7th.
Second.
Calling the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you very much, and we will now move on to the next item, which is a vote to approve the job descriptions. So we had introduced these at a meeting of the school, of the school committee just last night, and they are around the Dean of Student Life, which was included in our approved budget this year, and also dates back to the override. So we would be voting today as a formality on this particular position. We also have the Director of Finance and Operations, which has, which has some minor revisions to the job description. And then we also have the Senior Program Manager of Operations and Planning, which broadens the scope of the Operations Coordinator that we had been, that had been presented to us back in January, and now includes a communication component, a technology component, and reaches across all operations and support of different administration, administrative staff. Any questions or comments, discussion on that?
I'll just reiterate that I highly support the Senior Program Manager, Operations and Planning, the addition of innovation and process, and, you know, as well as focus on communications with the community.
Second that.
So since we've previously discussed these, would you like a motion for all three, rather than taking them individually?
We could do that, I was going to put that question back to the group, if you wanted to vote these one at a time, or as a group.
You can do all three.
I'm happy to make a motion that the committee approve the job descriptions as revised and previously presented and discussed at our meeting on the 12th, for the Dean of Student Life, Director of Finance and Operations, and for the Senior Program Manager of Operations and Planning.
Second.
Great. I will call the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much. And now we will move on to vote to approve the recommendation on the Director of Finance and Operations hiring. This is from Dr. Hackett and Ms. Kirby.
So the position had been posted for quite some time. As you know, the timing on the opening is, is tough for any position, especially tough for positions that are difficult to fill already. That's not a, certainly not a, this is the way life works in schools. And I think that just based on the size of the pool, while there are some, some strong candidates within that pool, based on the size of the pool, I'm not sure that we have the number of applicants that we would get at a different time, specifically if we were to go back out in the spring. So I'd like to recommend to you, as, because you were expecting to hire a full-time person, that you change the hiring focus to a, an interim director position for the 21-22 school year. We would reach back into the pool that's existing and let those people know. If they are interested in that process, we could invite them into that process. Depending on whether or not we needed to repost, we, we could probably just post it for the purposes of posting it. Depending on whether or not we needed to repost, we, we could probably just post it for the purposes of posting it, but now you're going to be kind of into a cycle, we will be into a cycle of looking to see who's kind of out there, who does the interim circuit. So, I do know the Superintendent's Association, NASBO, several MASC would have listings of some people who, who would be or could be available to come in and do an interim position. So, that would be my recommendation, and then with that recommendation, it still is your hire. I think it would be up to you, but it may be better for the process overall if you had a couple of members, or at least one member of the committee represented on the actual search screening process, interview process. I would love to think that we could move on this relatively quickly, and I know in the calendar, you have the date of July twenty-seventh as an, as an additional, or as a school committee meeting date. It would be our hope that we bring back a candidate, or even a couple of candidates at that point, for you to review and act on.
I would be happy to be part of the screening committee. Volunteering myself.
I would too.
Now, just comment that I think you're spot-on, that it's better to hire an interim candidate at this point. Just, it's nicer to have a longer runway and timeline when you're trying to dedicate to someone for a long term, so thank you for that.
Any further comment on voting to approve Dr. Hackett's recommendation?
Happy to make a motion to approve Dr. Hackett's recommendation to open the process for the employment of an interim Director of Finance and Operations for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Second.
And I will call the vote.
Aye.
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 Okay, great. And then that leads us to nomination and appointment of no more than two members of the committee as representatives of the Director and Finance Operations Search Committee.
And just to clarify, this is for the interim?
Yes, yes. Pardon me.
No, no worries.
Happy to nominate Mr. Nixon, since he's made his wishes known.
Happy to nominate Mr. Bolinese.
Like to make a motion that Mr. Nixon and Ms. Bolinese represent the school committee and the hiring committee for the Interim Director of Finance and Operations.
Second.
Calling the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Next item is a vote to accept a gift from the McCall Parents Association for outdoor seating and bike rack.
I'm hopeful that someone in this room knows more about this than I do.
I do, I voted on it.
I was gonna say I knew too.
The McCall Parents Association meeting. Were you in on that too?
I talked to the McCall president.
I thought I saw the bike racks out there.
I think they are.
It would be a shame to rip them off at this point.
Yes. It was very happily being used.
It was a gift from the eighth grade class of the McCall Parents Association to provide a bench and additional bike seating for the grounds of McCall. They saw a lot, an increase in student ridership of bikes during the pandemic, and would like to also encourage students to be able to ride their bikes to school as an alternative means of transportation, rather than parents driving students individually when, when appropriate.
And the bike racks were crowded.
Yes, the bike racks that they had were really crowded, so.
That was a theme. Mr. Lynn was in particular interested in some benches and seating, and then this kind of came up more sort of organically. The conversation quickly came to bike racks. My observation for years has been there's a shortage of space, and with COVID and so many more of our kids out on bikes, including our youngest ones, just a sense that we once again will be out of space. So the P A. went back to Mr. Lynn and said, are you sure you don't want another bike rack? We'd love to give you one. So I think that was welcomed.
And I think particularly now that the grounds have been, now that the building has been completed in the rear of the school, I think there was some hesitation about adding more bike racks until all that work was done, so I think a number of things came together also.
And Mr. Lynn has weighed in on both location of bench and bike racks and so forth, to your point, so all very much coordinated with the principle there.
As, also with the D P W., just, there is a memo in your, in your packet as well. So, just to add also, the approximate cost is $10,000. I don't know if you've generally included the approximate cost on the acceptance of the gift, but that's in this memo, so I just thought I would say it out loud.
So I'd be happy to move that we accept with gratitude the gift of outdoor seating and a bike rack for the McCall Middle School from the McCall Parents Association as presented.
Second.
Calling the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and thank you very much to the McCall P A. for your generous support, as always.
The eighth grade class and parents.
And the eighth grade class, so thank you for your support of the school. And we're, I was going to say that we were looking forward to seeing the installation of the benches and the rack, but I think some of it might already be there. We're excited to see this.
Ride our bikes over and sit on them.
That's right. Next on our list is vote to the approval of surplus A E Ds for the town departments.
So five units have been identified as surplus. They're older models that are in good working condition and have recently been evaluated and updated by the manufacturer, so we would be looking for a motion to surplus those.
And also, just to clarify, Dr. Hackett, they did assess whether we had A E Ds at all of our fields before we surplus these as well. So all of our fields are already, already have active.
I'll make a motion to surplus them to the other town departments.
Second.
Calling the vote.
Aye.
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 Okay, and next is a vote to approve the minutes from the June first, twenty-twenty-one meeting, as presented.
So moved.
Okay, vote.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you very much. And it is twelve oh five. We'll just move into the chair report. And I'll just say it's been, well, I was going to say it's been a while since we have met for a regular school committee meeting, but we just met last night, so. But since the beginning of June, when we had last had one of our long meetings, we've seen the last week of school, the start of summer vacation and camps, and I just wanted to say from that, from that point in time and up through now that we're just really grateful to our community of students, our teachers, our families, guardians, staff, administrators, and everybody for all your support in getting through a really challenging year. That's, it's been just a very trying and challenging time for all of us. We have said a fond farewell to our retiring superintendent of six years, Dr. Judith Evans, and to Ms. Ellen Whitmore for her work in the district as Director of Finance and Operations. She has moved on to Wayland. And we've also said farewell to Ms. Frida Canavam for her thirty-two years of service to the district, and we wish her a happy retirement and new grandchild. She has sat through more school committee meetings than all of us, even you, Mr. Nixon. And I'd also like to just put in a belated thank you for our graduated student representatives from the high school, Evan Edler and Caroline Andrews, for their work and dedication during their years with us. And in the fall, we'll be welcoming back student representatives Elle O'Connor and Charlie Savage. And beside, behind the scenes this summer, as you've heard today, so much is going on with professional development and for our teachers, our staff, and then also planning for the fall. It really is an ongoing process and just a crazy time throughout the summer. Beyond that, in the town, I believe you can still see some large white vinyl, vinyl, excuse me, displays that are filled with art from the Griffin Museum. And if you look closely, you will find some contributions from our very own Winchester High School honors student photography, and student photographers. So please take a look if you get a chance. And thank you very much for today and for your work, and now for Dr. Hackett's report.
Can I just say a quick thank you?
Yes.
I just wanted to say a quick thank you to all the teachers who dropped their work on the last day of school and picked it up just a short week or so later.
Or Monday.
Yeah. And the administrators, the principals, who are being principals of summer school. There is an incredibly larger summer school offering this year than we normally have, and it has been a tough year. And for people to go into that with joy and energy and welcoming our kids both virtually and in person all summer, I'm just in awe of those people. So I just want to take a minute to thank them for doing that and for supporting our kids, not just during the school year, but all summer long.
Yes, for sure. Driving past V A. a few days ago, I was like, wow, look, everybody's out there and they are ready to go.
Can I just also chime in and thank, I want to thank Chris Kerhyattz for his remarks during public comment. I was not aware Ken Tully had retired until a couple hours ago. So, what an incredible contribution Ken has made to Winchester. He's also raised a teacher, so the tradition continues, and we're gonna miss him.
Okay. Dr. Hackett.
Just to thank you again for your support and putting your confidence in me for the position and for your support today, specifically on the job description and the operations, that was a major change to something that you had already approved, and you allowed me to do, to work on that and approved it in short order, so I do think that's a position that, that can make a difference. The last couple of weeks have been good time for me to get to know the people in this office. I have now moved, have been moved, it was happening, it was in progress when I came to work the other day, to a different location with the building down the hall. I feel like I'm settling in, and I am looking forward to continuing to meet with more people. The last couple of weeks has been mainly kind of focused internally, but I certainly invite any of you at any point to let me know if you'd like to get together to discuss some issues, but also we'll be reaching out to some additional people, probably through the chair, some too as well, but also making connections with the town, which I have not really done yet. It is an interesting time in Winchester. I'm used to more people around. Braintree was, for whatever reason, a lot of people just kind of stuck to, maybe it was just because of COVID, maybe that's what I'm thinking about, but it's, it's quiet, and it's been great, because it's allowed me to just to kind of think and get grounded and, you know, kind of organizationally, both, you know, as a, as a professional and thinking about things like Google Drive and shared drive and how to set the work up, but it's also been able, I've been able to have some really good, solid conversations just to try to continue to learn what you're doing, which is my number one focus, you know. Trying to figure out what you're doing, and today was one more step in that process and how we can work together and how I may be able to add some value to that work. So, look forward to meeting the end of the month, hopefully we can nail down a couple of positions and would have a more complete report for you at that point, so, thank you.
Great, thank you. And we will now move to future agenda items, so are there any suggestions from the committee?
So just to recap, I'm sorry, Seamus, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Chris.
So, capital projects.
Yep.
Presentation, review, and a vote. As I said, we have capital tomorrow night. I'll have a conversation with the Assistant Town Manager, kind of get a sense of what the schedule is. COVID impacted the cal, the calendar for capital, as you know, we've had postponed town meetings, what, two or three times in a row? So I need to understand what town hall's expectation is in terms of fall town meeting, and maybe even talk to the moderator and just get a sense, but it, it, there's the potential that there may be a request that we have like a one-off meeting, just to be sure we stay on schedule with capital stuff. Too soon to say, so the capital. And then you mentioned Evan and Caroline, so I just wanted to remind the committee that they both said they'd be willing to come back and talk to us over the summer about lessons learned from the student perspective, and that their student government group had had a lot of good discussion about things they thought worked well or better, that we had, you know, shifted organizationally, and I want to be sure we don't lose that opportunity. I know we have two new student reps, that's great, but, you know, Evan and Caroline with their experience and sort of rapport with us, I think it's terrific they're willing to come back and talk to us, so I want to keep that on the radar too.
Thank you. Mr. Brady, did you have something?
Yes, so I, I just had some conversations probably about, over a month ago now, with a, a few families, and they were very interested in how we were gonna recognize Indigenous peoples in October, and so that was something that I thought was worth talking about. It was obviously important to them. I think it's very important, and I'd just like us to have, you know, some discussion around that and maybe an update potentially on what the schools are gonna be doing around that time of the year, and how do we honor that and make sure that we're keeping that in mind.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hopcroft.
Yeah, I'll just build on, on Mr. Nixon's suggestion, and I think we've said this before, but also hear from the teachers about, you know, what has worked. You know, I know in my personal experience, I've seen with one of our sons, you know, amazing, you know, educational experience that through, you know, remote learning and whatnot, you know, I think there's probably a lot of pockets of innovation and lessons that we'd love to just, just take a moment and, you know, document and just hear about. You know, we've heard, we've heard what hasn't worked. You know, let's, let's take some time and just like hear what are some of the things that are new and different, because, you know, not only for snow days, but there will be times that, you know, you know, one of us or, or many other, you know, professional development or, or other things, you know, might be able to be, you know, done in different ways or have greater flexibility than what we've learned this year.
And we need our own school committee.
Oh, yes.
We need a, goals and norms workshop with Dr. Hackett.
Yep.
As we can, begin that planning process for...
Okay, and if that's all of our future agenda item suggestions, then I would say that segues very nicely into next meeting dates. I know we had mentioned July twenty-seventh. That is not actually formally on the calendar. Our next meeting date at this point is August tenth. So if we would like to add something for July twenty-seventh, or thereabouts, we could do that.
Would that be for the workshop, Karen, or for a regular meeting?
So, this would be for, it's a very good question. So, one would be, we need to have, or I think we needed to meet to approve the hire for the finance, for the Director of Finance and Operations.
Hopefully it lines up that way, yes.
Okay, oh, yes, I suppose that is true.
The twenty-seventh looks like it is on the calendar.
Oh, do I have it on the calendar?
It's on the updated one in this packet, but, right, it was not on the initial one.
It may not be, may not be on the website, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, because it wasn't, I don't think it was in our initial.
Okay.
I didn't have it on my calendar, so.
All right, so it is there. All right, never mind, I guess we already approved it.
Pretty familiar game. Are people okay with that, just if it wasn't noticed before, people may not have noted the change?
I think I had it in my, I, at some point, I believe I did have it in my head, that it was a second and a fourth week in July, but then I think we were thinking that it would, we would just be meeting once in July, once in August, so.
I think we may have put it back in when our last meeting was canceled. That was my recollection of things, but I could be wrong.
But again, regular school committee meeting, or a school committee meeting and workshop?
We could make it into the workshop as well, and...
I would be eager to share capital information on the twenty-seventh.
Okay, all right.
I'm just wondering if we make it a longer meeting with a break in between and just knock it all out in one day?
Yes, that's what I...
If people are available.
I'm okay with that, although it'd be helpful to have an estimated end time, right now, hold until one.
Yeah, and I'm in a similar, but like I would, I could meet in the morning, hard stop at one, and then I'm available in the evening.
I have an appointment that afternoon, so I could do the morning meeting, but...
I could do, I would say morning is probably better for me, and I'm fine with the hard stops. So, July twenty-seventh, nine thirty A M.
Could do that.
With...
What's on the grid right now?
That's, that's what's on the grid.
Nine, it's a morning meeting?
Yeah.
So it's on the grid already, nine thirty.
So is nine thirty to one sufficient to address the agenda item that Mr. Nixon raised, and do you follow the norms? Or, or do we need to bump that to a different time?
Well, I don't, I don't think we should be presenting and voting in one meeting on capital, although capital would be happy for us to do it that way. So I think it's more about, just we have some work to do to prepare the information, get it in a packet. I can review it with you guys, answer questions, we can...
And then do the rest of the work.
On something, that's fine, but I, I do see a vote at a meeting following that.
We could keep the agenda very focused and just have that, and then the update on the position, and then go into the workshop.
Yep.
Are you envisioning that tape? Are you envisioning that tape A?
So that's the other piece, so, so tape A, um, we own as part of the contract, they, they will actually come in and make a presentation about their work on the, um, the space program, the carriage house, but it's, they, they don't want to come in and make that presentation without also doing the analysis at Lynch. That really is, um, we've already had some tentative conversations with them, that that, um, Mr. Brady, might actually be a focused meeting, and we might even want to do that at Ambrose, for obvious reasons, because you're there, walk around. So that would, that would be my recommendation, is we do a special one-off meeting for the tape A presentation, but I can't tell you.
At another time.
What's that?
At another time.
At another time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But for this meeting, should we do nine to one, so we have time to build in a break too?
I could do nine.
Oh, nine, oh, okay.
Are you saying nine instead of nine thirty?
Nine to one, yeah, if we're gonna do a meeting and a workshop, because that allows us to take a break and recharge too.
Yeah, I'm, I'm changing it right now.
Sure, that's, sure, that's fine, actually.
I mean, because if we get out early, we get out early, but.
Yeah, that's what I was just thinking, and probably earlier, the better, I think I have visitors in town.
We need to revote the.
I don't think so.
Uh, no, I think when, yeah, we just adjust it as necessary, we, uh, once we have discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, um, so with that, I would accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Vote.
Aye.
Aye, and thank you all very much, uh, and thank you to Wing Cam for all your help, especially in helping us get set up with Zoom and live streaming and everything.
And Dr. Hackett, you have your first official meeting.
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you, and you did a great job managing.